Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting for March 3rd, 2008 to order. Just a reminder, if you do have cell phones or pagers, please turn those off. The other thing is, if you wish to speak to any issue, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this, and you can find them over on the press table. If you could fill that out, including the item, or if it's general comments, please put that in there and turn it into Jack at the end of the dioc. way we will make sure that we don't overlook you as we approach those items. With that, as always, Jackie, could you please call the roll for determination of a quorum, please?
Troy.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Hatcock.
Here.
Earl Buck.
Here.
O'Krefty.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Wyffen Buck.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Croger.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Very good, thank you, everyone. Next thing on our agenda, as always, is our invocation. If you would please stand, and Troy Carr from the Faith Temple Church will be giving a certification, then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for being kind to us and good to us. Ask that you would bless this meeting. Ask that you would bless our mayor, give him the strength and wisdom. Ask that you would bless every council person, that they would make decisions that would be fair and just. Ask that you would bless our city of Rapid City, that you would give us peace and prosperity. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor Carr. Next thing, as always, is the adoption of the agenda. If there's any additions to the agenda, the Chair would ask that we move items 106 and 117 to follow item 62, which is the last item on our consent calendar. That is the Dakota Canyon. There is a rezone request and also a request to amend the comprehensive plan. And so we will be taking public comment on that immediately after our consent calendar. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Alderman Deb Hatcock.
Yes, polar plunge information?
Any additional? We'll mark that as 77A. 77A. Any additional additions or changes to the agenda? If not, the Chair would look for a motion for approval with the note that we will be moving item 106 and 117 to immediately follow item 62 and also the addition of 77A.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion on that motion, and discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. At this time, the Chair would look for a motion to approve the minutes of the February 19th, 2008 city council meeting. We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of the February 19th meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Let's see, we next go to the general public comment period. This is the time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at this meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the city council members present. We do have two speaker request forms for the general comment period. We do have a speaker request form from Bonnie Redden. And there again, Bonnie, if you could just identify yourself.
Okay. My name is Bonnie Redden. I live in Ward 4, here in Rapid City. I have been really concerned about this thing that they're touting as the Walmart TIF. So two weeks ago, I started investigating it with the people that run Walmart.
Bonnie, I gotta think about this just for a second.
Okay.
I think you're probably, Mr. Chairman, I think she's actually in order because I don't believe there's any issues dealing with the TIF itself on the agenda. So I think Bonnie Redden is in order. I'm sorry, Bonnie, please proceed.
Yeah, I tried real hard to avoid that.
And you did a good job.
Thank you. Okay, anyway, a couple of weeks ago, I started investigating Walmart's intentions. I've called them three times, talked to the same two people at three different times. Today, I called them at 3:00, asked them if anything had changed. One of these people works for site acquisition, one of them for new store development. I asked them three questions. Have you bought land in Rapid City, South Dakota? Absolutely not, no. Do you have plans to build a new store in Rapid City, South Dakota, within the short-range future? No, not. And did you ask for a TIF so you could build a store in Rapid City? At this point, the one man, whose name was Terrence, started laughing and said, "No, I don't think so." We've heard about this from other people. They did not apply for a TIF. So my thing is, I wish that they would quit putting it in the newspapers as the Walmart TIF. They need to clarify whose TIF this is. This is Doug Hamilton's TIF, and people should be aware of that, and they should not put it in the paper as the Walmart TIF. The Walmart has absolutely no knowledge of or nothing to do with that. So, my dad used to have a thing. He said, "If it looks like a duck, and it walks like a duck, and it quacks like a duck, kids, it's a duck."
Thank you, Ms. Redden. We also have a speaker request form from Jim Phoenix.
I am Jim Phoenix. I live at 1332 Panorama Circle, Rapid City. I just, I think there's a misunderstanding, and I think the people in our general area, we have not voted down having a Walmart. We're just saying that we just assume not have a box store in our backyard, and that's not really a good word to say. But I think there's a gentleman on the council that really thinks that we're fighting Walmart in total, and we're not fighting Walmart in total. We think Walmart is probably a good deal, is probably a good tax incentive. We're not against Walmart. I want it understood that we're not against Walmart. We just don't care for its present location. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. I see no further speaker request forms for the general public comment period. With that, we will go on to the non-public hearing items. This is items 1 through 79, and the Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 1 through 62, please. 1 through 62. We have a motion and a second to go open the public comment period on items 1 through 62, and discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do not have any speaker request forms for any items 1 through 62, so the Chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period. Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public comment period for items 1 through 62, and discussion on that motion, and discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the consent calendar, that is items 1 through 62. And the Chair would ask the council and the staff if there are any items that we need to remove from the consent calendar. If so, please turn your light on. Seeing none, the Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 62. We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent calendar, and discussion on that motion. This is items 1 through 62. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to, that's the end of the consent calendar, we are on to items 63 through 79, and it will also include items 106 and 117. So at this time, the Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment periods for items 63 through 79, and 106 and 117. We have a motion and a second, and discussion on that motion, and discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are in the public comment period, and we do have a speaker request form from Janet Smith on items 65 and 66. Ms. Smith, if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Janet Smith, and I live in Ward 2. I see that you're trying to approve another TIF, and I think the county, the city has been well advised of the negative consequences of TIFs. This one is for another housing development. And again, your legal and finance people have told you from the attorney's office that it does not meet the qualifications of blight, and yet you're going ahead and trying to approve it. If you look at the pictures that are on there, the aerial photographs, those are fields, those are open areas, those are not blight. There's nothing to be redeveloped, it's just open territory. It's not blight. Now, I don't know about you, but every time you paint stripes on a horse, it doesn't make it a zebra. You call it a TIF, it doesn't make it less than a bond issue. A bond issue that puts this city at risk is still bonds, and that's all a TIF is. It's a fancy way of dressing it up and calling it something for development, and it's still going to cost us in the long run. This thing's not even due to be paid off till 2029. This city won't even be solvent by that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We also have a speaker request form, and before we continue, just for point of clarification, we are moving item 106 and 117 forward, and just for clarification, I think it's important, the motion that will be made is to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of the request. So that will be on items 106 and 117. We also have a speaker request on item number 67, and a Dustin is a Willett. Yep? Dustin, if you could please, for the record, please state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Dustin Willett. I'm coming before you today as the president of the Rapid City Penning County Water Rescue Team. Just speaking to item 67, listened with interest in legal and finance and a few other meetings that I've been to, I understand that the position right now is that there's no identified use and no identified funding for obtaining that piece of property. And while money doesn't grow on trees and is not going to magically appear, and I understand that there's probably cheaper and probably more realistic avenues for our particular plight, that piece of property would be perfect for a dive rescue station that we're trying to get into the works. I've discussed it with several department heads and council members and staff leaders as well, and again, I'm not saying we need to do this. I just wanted, before the hammer fell, to interject that while there still is no money, there certainly is a potential use for that land. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form on item number 71 from a DeVie, is that correct? Of 929 Kansas City Street.
It's Dory.
Dory, very good. Your R looks like a V, my apologies. And Dory, if you could, please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Dory, and I'm here to make public comment on the Powell Gardens, but I'd like to thank all of you for listening to me today, and all of the people in the audience. Thank you, and especially the older people. In our culture, we have a lot of respect for older people, so I apologize if I say anything that might offend anyone in the room. So, I would like to say that the organization I work for is sanity, and we did receive a large grant for youth workforce development, and we would be supporting the Powell Garden in supplying youth to participate in working at the Powell Garden under our expense. And I would like to encourage you to, being a person that likes to travel, and I send my kids around the world to travel at one time or another, when I go to different countries, and I went to Europe, Germany, so I was always curious why the Germans liked to come see us Indians. So I went to Germany to see the Germans, and I found it was very beautiful to learn their culture and know something about them. And I think it's just a beautiful thing that we could share our culture with other people around the world that come to the great state of South Dakota to visit Mount Rushmore and Crazy Horse and the Badlands, and we have so much here that people want to come see, and I think this would be one more thing for them to enjoy and a moneymaker for us in the great city of Rapid City. So, thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Dory. We also have a speaker request form on item number 71 from a Robert Cook. There again, Mr. Cook, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name's Robert Cook. I'm the, I'm speaking on behalf of the Powell Grounds and Art Market. I was a longtime educator. I spent 14 years in the tribal schools, teaching at Little Woon Crow Creek, Lower Brule, and Red Cloud, and the last four years was very enjoyable as a teacher at Rapid City Central High School. One of the things that I feel is so going to be important about the Powell Grounds and Art Market is the opportunity it's going to bring for education. I presently work at Crazy Horse Memorial, and one of the things that the family has really worked on over the years is how to bring more American Indians to work at the memorial, because logistically, demographically, it's hard to, for many of our people to go up to the Black Hills and to work. So they're, they've been actively fundraising, they're building a dormitory, which is going to be completed in 2009, is going to house 40 American Indian students. And one of the things that my job is, is cultural affairs specialist, is to go out into the communities and try to recruit a workforce to go up there. Daphne, with Alliance of Tribal Tourism, has been working with Crazy Horse Memorial to try to partner with this apprenticeship program, because once the Powell Grounds is up and going, it's going to be important to sustain it by a strong workforce. And so the youth are going to be a very important factor in this. And as for my education background, I've seen through the years how, you know, one of the big issues in our community here in Rapid City is the high dropout rate of our students, particularly our American Indian students. We have about nearly 3,000 in the school district, but each year we graduate maybe 40 or 50. And I'm not, I'm not, I was a history teacher, not a math major, but that's not a 65% graduation rate, that's an 80 to 90% dropout rate. And I think we'd be able to create opportunities for these kids to have jobs working right here in the community, working at Crazy Horse, providing those opportunities through education, apprenticeship, and workforce development. So that's why I really encourage you to move forward on this project. You know, the reservation community brings a lot of money into Rapid City, too, you know, with the sales taxes, and that's a tremendous amount, and tourism is built on our economy. And so being able to tap into this and create this, this open market will be important for our community, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. We also have a speaker request form from Matt Freidel on item number 71. Did you have a visual that you wanted to share?
Is there a way I can share this with you?
Sure. Mr. Preston will come down, and we'll get it up on the screen. We're going to test Mr. Preston's technical skills here.
I have several.
There we go.
Is he even straight up? Okay. Is that what you want? That's perfect. Great. If you need to draw on this. Okay. And I can just grab it out of there? Yeah. Well, I'll be there. Okay. My name is Matt Freidel. I'm here with Wiss Associates and ADA, and we're here to ask that you designate the proposed Powell Gardens and Indian Art Market site that's north of the Journey. And just want to take you through a little bit of history and hopefully head off some questions anybody might have. As you know, we've been going through a site selection process, and we wanted to be located downtown, I guess, and there's surprisingly quite a few little sites in this area that could potentially work out, and there's quite a few issues in this area as well. Some of the things we've looked at are, the, I'm sorry, let me show you right here. The mayor's come forth with a proposal for the, for a site just north of the Journey. It starts in a parking just north of there and moves up that hill. We've had some other sites, and they had problems. One of them is this area is near the floodplain. The site that we're looking at right now is completely out of the floodplain. There was also some concern when we were talking to the Civic Center that we might be developing an area they'd want to develop for parking in the future that was near their location, a place they'd, they've looked at. This site is over an existing lot. Our just casual observance shows that this is an underused parking lot, but there's plenty of potential areas for development and parking in this area. One image you might have seen is, is this, and this, this image was just done as a way for us to explore whether or not this site would work for ADA. And our explorations tell us that yes, this site will work for the type of programming that we're talking about, the Powell Gardens and Indian Art Market. There's enough room there that we think we can encompass their entire program from performance to living history, to the art market, and their day-to-day activities there. And we just have a couple images for you to look at, too, to give you a sense of what this might look like in the future. This is an image looking north from the Journey, just up the front there. And finally, I just want to remind you what we're here doing today. We're, we're just asking you to approve the site so that ADA can pursue their planning and development with confidence. So, thank you. We're here to ask, answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Freidel. We also do have a speaker request form from Barney Harrell on item number 73.
Thank you.
Hope I pronounced that last name correctly.
You got it correct. My name is Barney Harrell. I'm here representing Triple C Development. Item 73 has to do with a new AutoZone store. I'm just here to make myself available to answer any questions that you guys might have. There are two other people here to speak about the same issue, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harrell. We also have a, let's see, Janelle Finch, item number 73.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm here with Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers on behalf of AutoZone. I'll try to be real brief. AutoZone is looking at coming to Rapid City, and I am here this evening not only with Mr. Harrell from Norfolk, Virginia, but also Mr. Arthur Nave, who traveled here from Memphis. They're looking at adding a new AutoZone store to Rapid City at the location of East North Street and Racine. We spent a great deal of time working through site development here, and we were able to meet almost all of the requirements for site development, with the exception of the location of an approach which was not able to be directly opposite the approach to the south. And when we were at Public Works Meeting, there was some concern expressed about the safety of having the approaches not aligned, and the Public Works directed, excuse me, Public Works Committee directed Mr. Ellis and Growth Management to look at whether or not there would be any real safety issues to that. And my understanding in conversations with Mr. Ellis is that they had actually looked at our site plan and concluded that there was no real viable option or alternative to what we had shown. So we are here today to ask that you support this request, and we are available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. We also have a speaker request form from Arthur Nave, item number 73. And sir, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Arthur Nave. I'm, I work for AutoZone out of Memphis, Tennessee. I'm the project architect and represent AutoZone the business, and we're looking forward to locating a new retail auto parts store here in Rapid City. And hopefully, if we can work out these access issues to the site, and we would be here, I'm also here to answer any questions you might, you might have later on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Stephen Brennan, item 65 and 66.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Stephen Brennan. On this tax increment district, here we're going with another one again. And of course, the only thing I really see that in this whole district that should be of interest to the city on this, on cost, is the oversizing costs. And that's to the tune of $400,000. Other than that, I think that the developer can pay for his own development up there. That's how things should be done. If they want to put this in, I'm all for it. Let them. But I'm against us paying for grading, culverts, things of this nature, that are the responsibility of these developers. This is getting to be ridiculous to the tune of how we're just giving these developers our future tax base. If the oversizing costs are $400,000, let's put up a bond, let's pay for it, our end, and let the developers take care of it here. We're just, I mean, before you know it, all of this new development's going to be under TIFs, and then where is our tax base? It's still on our shoulders, the old portion of town. That's where the tax base will be, where the burden is. And I tell you what, my back is getting sore. It's about ready to break from this burden. I want to live in this town. I wouldn't mind retiring in this town. But at the rate things are going here, our tax burden for us that live in the older parts of town are just going to be out of sight because of these TIF districts. I recommend that you vote no. Just say no, like good parents do.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. We have no further speaker request forms on items 63 through 79, and item 106 and 117. Seeing none, the Chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period. We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And according to the agenda that we did amend, we are on to item 106, and we'll go to Deb Hatcock to read that in, please.
106 is a request by Skoll Construction for Whittingham and Lestrange LPI for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use destination from park forest to general commercial with the planned commercial development. And my motion would be to deny and acknowledge applicant's withdrawal of this request.
Second. I'm going to go to Marsha. I think it's actually just to acknowledge, is that correct?
That's correct, just to acknowledge the applicant's request, withdrawal of the request.
Okay, I'm sorry, just read what was on here. And it's located northeast of Table Rock Road, sorry about that.
Okay, did we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge, acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of the request. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to item 117, please, and Alderman, Alderman Deb Hatcock.
117 is the second reading of ordinance number 5305, an ordinance amending section 1706 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Skoll Construction for Whittingham and Lestrange LPI for a rezoning from Park Forest District to General Commercial District, located northeast of Table Rock Road, and I acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're back on to our normal agenda, and we'll be on item 63, please.
Number 63 is the first reading of ordinance number 5371, repealing chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code relating to wards and precincts and adopting a new revised chapter 1.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code.
Second.
And a move, approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if our finance officer could put the map up as he's done, and if there are any voters in any of those precincts that this would affect.
Mr. Preston.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. There are five areas that are being annexed. These two up here are, there's one there, one there. The one down here is into 24, and then there's one here for 14, and one here at 14. I'll bring them up large. I'll bring them up larger to answer the second question of Alderman Chapman, is there's no voters in any of these areas that we are annexing into the city.
Very good. Mr. Chapman, you still have the floor, sir. Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none. All's in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Everyone, we're on to item number sixty-four, please.
Sixty-four is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three seventy, adding non-overnight dog kennels and corrals for transitory animals as a condition used by amending section seventeen eighteen zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item sixty-five, please.
Sixty-five is a request by Spurlet Consulting Incorporated for Dog LLC to consider an application for a creation of tax increment district located east and west of Haynes Avenue and north and south of Country Road. And I yield the floor for a motion.
Chair would look... We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I have to agree with the audience members today. I don't think this TIF is appropriate for this area considering the costs and for the developer, for the city. The developer costs about $646,000. We're about $405,000 in oversizing and contingency professional fees, and necessary and convenient costs are about $575,000. I'm going to disagree with this. I think this developer at this price can do these culverts and these, this district themselves. So, I'll be saying no, and I'd like to see what the council says, and then I can make a motion if we need to change it.
Thank you. Let's go to, also, we have a light on from Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask the Growth Management Director to go over the project plan for the benefit of the audience. I believe that these are all developer costs, with the exception of the other costs that Alderman Hadcock had outlined, but the council controls those costs. Would you go over this project plan, please? And then I have some remarks, Mayor.
Just, just for clarification, Alderman Johnson, this is actually the creation of the TIF district. Do you want to hear that discussion now, or would you want to wait for item sixty-six?
I'd prefer to hear it now. These are, these are linked in a way that I don't think you can discuss one without the other.
Very good. I agree. So, the chair will, will that is in order. So, Marcia, can you go through the plan real quick?
Thank you. The project plan includes culvert and grading at Cobalt Street, and there are maps attached online to the project plan. That is $400,529. The culvert and grading at Three Rivers Drive, $245,561. Oversizing water and sewer for annexed land west of Haynes Avenue, $281,484. And oversizing of water and sewer for Brookfield, $123,675. There's $175,000 identified for professional service costs, and then there was added, with the approval of the TIF committee, contingency cost of $100,000 and necessary and convenient cost of $300,000. Those are not allowed to be spent unless this goes back through the process, through the TIF committee, through the Planning Commission, and to the council for action on the contingency and necessary and convenient costs. Those are put into place in case unidentified costs come up during the process. We cannot include or increase the project cost after the TIF is approved as a project plan.
Okay. Alderman Johnson, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding of this plan is that most of the costs of this plan are for the community costs involved with the drainage of the area. This particular parcel has, is a regional facility which requires a lot more costs which are not associated with the developer on this site, is a regional detention facility. And the oversizing costs are actually, that are the city's costs, and actually are generally spread amongst a much greater area. The convenient costs and the contingency costs are not approved until the council takes a look at them, and the council has the right to maintain that those are simply community costs, not developer costs. If the city would not be involved in a TIF of this sorts, the oversizing costs the city would have to pay for out of another fund. So, it's, in my opinion, it makes sense to let the development itself pay for the community costs. And again, these are community costs. These are costs that are not assigned just to this small parcel, but to a much greater area. And I should have pulled my stuff up earlier, but there are no costs in here, at least that I've been told, that are not community costs. In fact, and I believe if this is correct, Marcia, that the road costs are actually something that the, the school district had agreed to pay for through some other, do we, do we include those as well?
Mr. Chair? The project you refer, Mr. Johnson, is another project that is east of town, another TIF project that's pending, so it's not this one.
I better reread my thing, then. I take back everything I said and off to take a look at. Would you, would you tell me exactly which one this one is and to make sure I know?
Say, Marcia? Can you, I think this might help. Can you put this on the overhead? I think this may help clarify. Is that the sheet you need?
I'm going to go back to the location so I know where it's at.
Please go ahead, Marcia.
If I can get to the right page here. This page that's up, page seven of the project plan, actually breaks it down into those project costs that would be paid for by the city versus those paid for by the developers. Again, the oversizing costs are shown as being city costs, should we decide to incur those at the time those projects go forward and actually oversize those improvements. The applicant is asking for the culvert and grading at Cobalt Street, and the culvert and grading at Three Rivers Drive, which I've shown on the aerial, or on the slides here, identifies those. This is part of the Brookfield development. And again, those are shown on this slide identifying that those would be funded by the developer, and then reimbursed through the TIF.
Alderman Johnson, you still have the floor, sir.
Mayor, I studied the wrong plan, so I'm making you further comments on this one. Thank you.
Very good. Additional comments? Additional comments? We will go to Alderman, Sam Quaker has not spoken, then we'll come back to Alderman Deb Hadcock. So, Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions and then some comments. Marcia, when you say, I have a question for...
Please.
...Melkins. When you, when you say culvert cost for culvert, or for grading, is it grading for the culvert, or is it grading for lots or the site in general?
Marcia.
My understanding, this is specific to the installation of the culvert and the drainage, where that crossing has to be installed as part of the road system across the drainage that's been identified in the drainage basin master plan.
Sam, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And then, and then, secondly, what percentage of this development will be dedicated to low-income housing?
Marcia.
There's no identified percentage that will be devoted to that. There's been discussion at the TIF committee about possible inclusion of some Teton Coalition lots, and perhaps the developer would like to address that at a later time.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that the Caitlin subdivision, which is in the general area, had a specified component of low-income housing, and that was necessitated prior to approval of the TIF. And I guess what I'm wondering is why the TIF committee and the Planning Commission, or perhaps the council, could, but why hasn't a specified percentage been required?
Marcia.
The Caitlin TIF was proposed as a housing, affordable housing TIF. That was the whole premise of it. And typical developer costs were paid for out of that TIF, and the reason for that was to allow there to be certain number of lots that would be affordable. This project was proposed because of the oversizing costs and the developer's belief that these large crossings as part of the drainage basin master plan were what justified it to be included in the TIF. So, there was different philosophies in terms of the proposal. The TIF committee did talk about including this, some element of affordable housing, but chose not to make that recommendation.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
What kind of a motion would be necessary in order to amend this to require an element of affordable housing? And if the council did that, would that, I mean, what, what effect would that have on the process?
Marcia.
You certainly could approve it if you knew what the number or percentage of lots that you wanted to require that to be. It would not change the amortization schedules from the city's viewpoint. However, it may affect the applicant's ability to move forward in terms of their pro forma for the entire subdivision.
One more question, Mayor. The, what was the percentage for Caitlin subdivision?
My recollection is 20%, but I have not looked at that file in some time.
Now, I'll, I'll yield to the rest of the council and see what their thoughts are, but, you know, my recommendation is, is that we, we ask, not only ask for a low-income housing component, but that we require it. And this is the first time, in my view, in my understanding, that we have been requested to pass a residential TIF that does not include a low-income housing component. I'm willing to stand corrected if that's, if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's the case, and that concerns me. And see what the rest of the council thinks, but I really think that this needs to be continued to add a, to require the addition of a low-income housing component. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Marcia, this is not a residential. First of all, TIFs are not allowed under TIFs unless it's low income, so this is an economic development TIF, or at least that's how it's been identified. Is that correct?
A project is an economic development TIF of any lot within that property, within that project, is intended to be used for commercial or industrial purposes, or is identified as commercial or industrial under the zoning of the community. So, this qualifies as economic development, which addresses how the allocation of state funds for education are allocated. So, really, that's not, not directly related. There have been other TIFs that were primarily residential similar to this. The one along Country Road that was approved, number fifty-five, that included a lift station. Again, there was a single lot in that area that was identified as commercial for that purposes, but otherwise it was for housing projects. I believe there's a number of others, too, that the city's approved for residential purposes, but I'd have to have some time to go through those to address the question in more detail.
Very good. Thank you. Let's see, we have a couple lights up here. Before we go back to Alderman Deb Hadcock for a second time, let's go to Malcolm Chapman, who has not spoken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sam, I appreciate you bringing up the affordable housing aspect. When I was on the TIF committee, this was a question that I did ask the applicant at that time, and it just seemed to not work in, to their numbers to make that work at that time. Subsequently, I left the TIF committee with the changeover and the new council, and that question probably didn't get asked anymore at the, at the TIF committee. So, I appreciate you bringing that up. I do have a couple of questions that I asked at Legal and Finance. I asked about the, the size of the commercial property there to make it an economic development TIF, and also about the... I just lost my thought. Sorry. I also asked about if the applicant was willing to, it seemed like we've set some sort of standard that most of the applicants who come forward to ask for TIFs put up the money. So, I asked the applicant if they were willing to put up all of the money for the TIF, and at that time, they said they would need to look at that and discuss that. I wanted to know if I could ask the applicant that question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Is the applicant in the crowd, in the audience? And Mr. Muth, if you could please identify yourself. Do you understand the question?
Yes, I do. My name's Joe Muth. We have visited that question, Malcolm, and yes, we would be willing to come forward with a full amount of the oversize in this TIF district.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
Just a clarification, Joe. Now, you said the oversize. Is that putting up all of the money for the TIF? The city's portion of the money for the TIF?
Correct. The oversize cost. The TIF, along with, I believe there's roughly $400,000 in oversize, we would also be willing to come forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We also have, let's see, we do have a light on from Alderman Deb Hadcock. Procedurally, let me ask the question. Are there any Aldermen that wish to speak before Alderman Hadcock speaks for a second time? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on, point of clarification and a point of, I want to ask this question. I don't think it's fair to ask this question to the Public Works Director. Obviously, the change in Public Work Directors, I'm sure hasn't given him the opportunity to look at this TIF in, in the manner that I think is necessary to move forward, and so I don't really want to put him on the spot. But my question is, is why are we paying for box culverts and grading? That's, that's a point-blank question.
Let's go to Marcia, she might be able to answer that for you.
Shortly before the meeting, Mr. Wyffenbach identified that question, so I had a little chance to, to think about it. I'm not sure that I would identify it as oversizing to do these culverts, but in previous tax increment districts, this council has agreed to pay for those. I don't know if they considered them to be oversizing or considered them to be an exceptional cost. The industrial project, Industrial Park Project number forty-four, tax increment district number forty-four, included a box culvert for a future crossing of a drainage. Tax increment district at the southeast corner of Catron and Sheridan Lake Road, that's a TIF number fifty-three, that included extensive drainage, box culverts. The Plum Creek Tax Increment District, number sixty-five, included that, as did, again, number fifty-two. A housing project had, again, a large box culvert. So, it's been included in previous projects. I'm not sure that I would say it was oversizing, but it has been found to be an exceptional cost through your actions on other TIFs.
Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Marcia. I'm not, obviously not concerned about other TIFs, but I'm concerned about, is this developer cost, or is this a public improvement cost? That's what I need to know, to make a vote tonight. I mean, is this, is something the city would normally pay for? I mean, in any other condition?
Marcia.
Other than in the TIFs that I was able to look at very quickly, I don't believe that the city has participated in those as oversizing costs.
Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's see, are there any other Aldermen that wish to speak before Alderman Hadcock speaks for a second time? If not, we'll go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Okay. Marcia, can you bring up the site where this is? I mean, it's over there, but can you bring it up? And that's all in the TIF, right? The red, red areas are the TIF?
Marcia.
Actually, it includes the entire black boundary, and the yellow and the red all are part of the tax increment district.
Okay. I'm having a little bit of heartburn with this, only because when I'm looking at the numbers, the capital costs, when you add those up, are like $646,090 or something like that. That is the developer cost. He's willing to upfront the oversizing, which is the city's cost, but gets those paid back. To me, when you have $175 as a professional fee, and then you have a contingent, or necessary and convenient costs, it seems like a double line item to me, which is $375,000 for whatever might happen in this TIF. To me, when you build a project, you don't get to build, if you are a builder, you don't get to build in $375,000 to your constituent. You wouldn't have a job. But we do this on TIFs, and it, to me, it looks like you're double line iteming what you need or what might happen. I understand some things happen, but why do you have professional fees and necessary and convenient costs? To me, again, double line item. When you add up $175, $100, and even $200,000, that's $475,000 in developer costs. We get $100,000 in that. That's $575,000 in other costs. The total of the developer without the oversizing is $646,000. Wow. We're almost doubling on necessary and convenient costs and professional fees to match up with a developer... a developer that's developing for drainage. If you look, culverts and grading and culp on a, on two streets is drainage. If you look at that area there, do you think that looks like necessary and an economic development TIF? Because he has one piece. If you could point out what piece is going to be commercial or industrial on there for me, Marsha? Is that the yellow piece?
It's the piece of property that's at the southeast corner of Country Road and Haynes Avenue.
So how many acres would you say that is with commercial on it, or industrial?
My guess is approximately an acre, acre to two.
My point exactly. So you made it so it could be an economic development TIF with that one acre. Does that make sense? In other words, we're doing a housing development with one acre of commercial to make it be a TIF with costs that are almost as high on necessary convenience, professional fees, and contingency costs. That doesn't make sense. We're paying for a housing development for somebody else. Now tell me, council, does this make sense at this point? No. If you look at this, it's wrong. It looks wrong. It is wrong. They made it, this is one of those programs or TIFs that I said made it look like something that you can do just because you have commercial or you have something to make it so it's bankable. But it's not. Again, I don't know if we need more information on this. You want to continue this? I would like to hear from the council. But my motion would be to deny this. It doesn't make sense. It looks like a TIF that was made to look like it was economic development. This is not economic development. This is a housing unit where the developer should pay the 646, and if he can't build it all at once, take his time, 10 to 20 years, as long as this TIF is, and I bet you he can pay for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Nope, 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 come on. We don't allow that. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Sam Quaker has spoken, so I am going to go to Bill Ocrepke before we go to Alderman Sam Quaker, who has spoken before. So Alderman, Bill Ocrepke, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Couple of thoughts come to mind here. First of all, as long as it's an economic development TIF, that means the taxes, our property taxes, aren't going to go up. So I'm not, I'm okay with that. But I would like to make sure that I do understand that, that the only reason why we are allowing these culverts to be used in a TIF, or have the, have the city pay for those, or the taxpayers pay for it, is because it has been put in a TIF before. Typically, and with our ordinances and the way we do business, these kinds of things are not normally paid for by the city. Could I just make sure that that's, that's correct?
Marsha, can you answer the question?
These kinds of things have not been paid for through developers' agreement for oversizing cost. Typically, when someone comes in and wants to take a roadway, and it's a three-lane facility, and we're requiring it to be a five-lane facility, the city will determine whether or not they want to build those extra two lanes and pay for that. That's considered to be oversizing, or to take a eight-inch pipe and make it a 12-inch pipe. The difference between those is the city's oversizing cost. We have not paid for that through oversizing agreements. The items that I identified were situations where I believe the Tax Increment Financing Committee, Planning Commission, and perhaps this council, found that those were exceptional costs, and as such, felt it was appropriate to include those in a TIF. But that's really up to your determination.
Alderman Ocrepke, you still have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure that the, the people that are watching this on TV and the people in the audience understood that. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have two speakers, lights on. We have from Alderman Quaker and Alderman Johnson, both have spoken before. Is there any other alderman that wish to speak before we go back for a second go-around? If not, we will go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Two, two things that I think need to be strongly considered here. One is, in light of the testimony where we've heard that there is one acre that is economic development property in terms of industrial or general commercial, you divide that, you divide 400 into that, that's less than a quarter of 1%. And we're calling the entire TIF an economic development TIF based on one quarter of 1% being general commercial or industrial property. And I do not know how we can justify that at this point. I think that we need to have more information on this. I would like to have a, an opinion, a written opinion from our city attorney's office. And maybe we need to consider getting an opinion from the Attorney General, because the last thing we want is for this TIF to become something that the legislature uses to, to say, "All right, folks, we're blowing the whistle and we're saying everybody out of the pool." Once again, we're taking one acre and using that to label this entire tax increment financing district as an economic development TIF. Is that intellectually honest? Now let everyone else answer the question. I think we really need to think about this. Also, the lack of, the lack of a required low-income housing component really concerns me. This needs more, more work. I would move to continue, to refer back to the Tax Increment Financing Committee and ask that further information be gathered regarding defining this TIF as an economic development TIF. And secondly, ask the applicant what they are willing to provide in terms of low-income housing designated lots. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A substitute motion to send this item, item 65, back to the TIF committee. Discussion on that motion. Let's see here. I'm going to go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can, I can support the motion on the floor. I, I just would like to caution the council a little, just to be careful. The rules in terms of TIFs are as they are. And today, currently, the rules are set up that if you have a certain amount of commercial property that you deem necessary, or you deem commercial in that TIF, that it can be called an economic development TIF. Not that I agree with that rule or not, that's the rule that we play by today. So I would just caution us a little bit to, to be careful in terms of what we're asking for, in terms of our city attorney or the attorney general. I do support, however, the going back, especially in light of the applicant saying that they would be willing to put up all of the money. In light of that, I would like for them to come back to look at the affordable housing, either lots that could go in, or a percentage of the lots, or a percentage of the land, or working with some of the nonprofits in the community to turn over some of those lots of this development. So I, I would support that as this goes back.
Thank you. We also have a speaker. Let's see, we have a light on from Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do definitely support taking this back. I don't, I have not studied this TIF. I thought it was another TIF that we have. I agree with Alderman Chapman's remarks regarding economic development TIFs. Nobody's trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. It is simply a designation on who pays taxes. It is not, whether it is a mall or something else like that. I have some additional questions. And Marsha, maybe you can help me out here. I'm looking at the, at the minutes now from the Tax Increment Committee. Has this been last heard from the Tax Increment Committee in June of '07?
Marsha.
It was last summer because an annexation had to be completed first. I assume that's the correct date and shows the last set of minutes. There were two or three meetings that this appeared at.
That's why, I thought this was one of our most, more recent ones, which I apologize to the audience and the council for my remarks. I would like to study this a little bit more, and I, again, I support the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Very good. We also have two more lights on. And just a reminder, the motion is a substitute motion to take this back to the TIF committee, and we will be holding the discussion strictly to that motion. So with that, Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll support sending it back to the TIF committee. I would, I would like to see it go through the process that we're putting in place, obviously. So I don't know if that's, probably doesn't really fit in the motion, but I wanted to make that comment, that if we've resolved the, the new TIF guidelines, I think that this will be appropriate. I think that, to fit into the, and I'm not sure where we're at with that, if someone could maybe fill me in.
Okay. There again, discussion will be held strictly to the motion on the floor, which is to send this back to the TIF committee. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with it going back to the TIF committee, because I, I too think, I've had some discussions earlier in the day about drainages and culverts, and, and I'm curious to, I believe they could be covered underneath TIFs, because a lot of ours go on, once we get up the drainage areas in, they get unmaintained, and I think that's a part that we need to, to take a look at. So I'm in favor of the motion on the floor for it to go back to.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be in support of the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I'll be in support of the motion, only because maybe the developer will see kind of where we're going. We need some, some infrastructure, water and sewer, maybe some affordable housing, maybe some parks, something that actually the citizens of Rapid City can benefit from this. Most of the time, if I approve any kind of TIF, I have to see what benefit you're going to give us. We are, if, if this is my business, that's how I work it. If you're going to do a park, you're going to do affordable housing, you're going to do something for us, I think then we can give a little bit as well. But that's what we were talking about, if I recall, at the TIF committee, and I think it's a very positive way to get something out of the development and help Rapid City, and also help the developers as well. So I appreciate the motion on the floor, and again, I think we can do better on this TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Motion on the floor, a substitute motion to take this back to the TIF committee. Any further discussion? Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
I just wanted to clarify, are we talking about items 65 and 66 to go back?
No, we're on item 65 only.
Okay.
Yep. Motion on the floor is take this back to the TIF committee, item number 65. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number 66, which is a companion, just a reminder. Deb, could you read that in, please?
Request by Spurlock Consulting Corporation for Doak LLC to consider an application for a tax increment district project plan located east and west of Haynes Avenue and north and south of Country Road. And I would move to take this back to the TIF committee as well.
We have a motion, a second, to take item number 66 and it back to the TIF committee. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 67, please.
67 is a report on use of property adjacent to the Executive Golf Course, and this came without recommendation from the committee. If we could have Marsha explain what we're doing and why we're doing it, Mayor.
Very good. Marsha, you know, the chair would look for, if nothing else, just a motion to acknowledge your report, so we can actually have a motion. Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge for discussion. With that, Marsha.
This is the property in question located along the north side of Omaha Street, just to the south of the Executive Golf Course. This property is currently owned by the State of South Dakota. Because of the city's previous interest in it, they have contacted us to see if we would like to acquire this property before they put it up for auction. They typically have extended that courtesy to us. In receiving what they have identified as their evaluation of the values of this property, they have identified a cost of $10 per square foot. To acquire all three properties, they've divided this property shown in yellow into three different parcels, would be approximately $625,000. The Parks and Rec Subcommittee, the Parks and Rec, excuse me, Advisory Board reviewed this and identified the fact that it would be desirable to acquire this property. However, they did not have a funding source that would support the acquisition. They felt it would be good to have, because of the open space adjacent to the golf course, the fact it would protect the golf course and the bike trail, and that this was an entryway into the community. In reviewing this with the mayor and staff, we identified that while it would be desirable, there was no specific acquisition purpose in mind. There was not a specific use proposed for the property, and there was no identified funding source. And for that reason, a recommendation came forward to the committee to not purchase the property. Again, it would be desirable, however, no specific use was identified, and no specific funding source could be identified. So the recommendation is to not acquire the property.
Very good. Let's see, who, who, that was Sam. Sam, let's see, no, I'm, okay. We had the motion. Very good. Alderman Sam Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. Marsha, are Greenway, the Greenway Funds, the federal Greenway Funds, could they be used for this purpose? I'm sure that was already looked at.
Marsha.
Certainly to the degree that any trailheads were developed for the Greenway pedestrian path expansion, it is possible that a project could be formulated that could meet the requirements for those funds, or at least a portion of the cost.
So, Mayor, so what's our window of opportunity, Marsha, for, I mean, when does the DOT absolutely need to know an answer?
We've been in conversation about this for probably two and a half years. They've not given us a deadline. They've been very gracious in working with us. I believe if the council was trying to acquire funds, or to identify funds through the budget process, that they would probably continue to be gracious and allow us the additional time, 60 to 120 days, if there was, again, a dedicated interest by the council in trying to find funding to make this project work.
Yeah, let's see what the rest of the council thinks about this, but I think that, that we, we should do more due diligence on this and see if there's a possibility of incorporating this into an overall Greenway fund plan. Also, I, I say this partly in complete seriousness and partly in jest, but I think we would also be willing to pay the same price that the Department of Corrections paid for the landfill land, and this, and also, we throw in the, the price that the DOT paid for the right-of-way on Mountain View Road last year. And, you know, I think it's only fair that we at least bring that to the table to Department of Transportation and remind them that twice in the last year, we've been quite generous with, with Rapid City's resources, and we would just expect them to, to remember that during, during this process.
We'll go back to Marsha Elkins.
If I might, it's actually worse than that, Mr. Quaker. This area here was originally right-of-way that the city vacated at the request of the Department of Transportation, and they're requesting $10 a square foot for that. The mayor and I and other staff members visited with Secretary of Transportation to determine if that might be a point of negotiation. And they indicate better, based on federal statutes, that it's not something that they could waive in terms of that cost. So I, I share your concerns, and we've tried to address that with the secretary.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion that we continue this item for 30 days and, and ask, actually, I would, I would, let me, let me rephrase that. I'd like to offer a motion that we continue this item to the second Legal and Finance Committee meeting in April, to allow staff an opportunity to continue the discussions with Department of Transportation, and also determine if this property could be incorporated into some type of a, a Greenway fund plan, to use Greenway Funds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Just, I'm looking at the calendar here, Alderman Quaker. So your motion, would you continue this to the second Legal and Finance in April? Is that correct? So, it'd come back, okay, very good. Is everyone clear on that? Okay. We have a substitute motion on the floor to continue this, it looks like, to April, April 16th, Legal and Finance Committee. Thank you, everyone. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can support the motion on the floor with the understanding that, that it's not absolutely tied to the Greenway development, and I, my understanding of Mr. Quaker's motion is it doesn't absolutely do that.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to oppose the motion. I think there are, is some property that should remain private. This is frontage along Omaha Street. I don't think it makes for a great park. It makes for some pretty dynamite commercial property, and I don't know if you know we're in the business, but we, we kind of like to have businesses and collect property taxes. I think that- property taxes, I think that this is a better, a better use for that, and I would, I would propose to you, if we're looking for good parkland, a lot is really needed in Ward One, where we don't have much parkland, I would like to see this redevelop as a nice business-type area, thank you.
Thank you, substitute motion on the floor is to continue this to the April sixteenth Legal and Finance Committee meeting, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Because of some staffing issues, if it's your desire to continue this out, I'd ask that you do that to the second meeting in May, just because of staff availability in April.
That would be the-
That's fine with the motion maker, Mayor.
It would be the May twenty-eighth meeting, no, that's Legal and Finance, is that all right with the motion maker, and the seconder, and the seconder, is that all right with the seconder?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I was pretty vocal on this at Legal and Finance, and I don't believe at Legal and Finance that we were really thinking that this, the best use of this property could be parkland, but we didn't know, we heard someone come up tonight, Dustin Willen, say that, you know, if we're looking, and not that he expects this to happen, but if we're looking, the dive and rescue team is looking for, you know, a place to house their things that's, that has great access to the interstate and to the waterways around the community, so I think the motion really just gives us some space to have the ability to continue to have conversations, not that anyone is thinking today that that necessarily should be parkland, but it potentially could be, so I don't think we're trying to take it off the commercial rolls, just to give us some time to continue to have the discussion, those are my comments.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock, just a reminder, the motion on the floor is a continuation motion, and please, if we could hold our remarks to that motion only, Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Can I ask Marcia a question, Mayor Hanks?
If it is, if it's in reference to the continuation motion.
Yep.
Go ahead.
How long do they hold land before they sell it, would you, meaning would they keep this land until May, or whatever, would this not be a good motion because of that?
Marcia.
I believe the Department of Transportation would allow us to have that timeframe to evaluate this.
Okay, that was my question, and I believe what Malcolm is saying is right, I think, I'm listening to Tom Johnson, I'm listening to Karen Olson, and all the people up here, it just gives us time to look at the situation, doesn't necessarily mean we want to do that at this point, but it's a good thing to look at, and it puts out the conversation to the public as well, so I appreciate that motion.
Thank you, let's next go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I have a comment about this, but it isn't to the continuation motion.
It needs to be to the continuation motion, please.
Okay, I won't cheat.
Okay, very good, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
It could be a combination.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make the comment that I too, I talked about this at Legal and Finance, and I guess I would support the motion to continue just for the opportunity to give us some more time to discuss it, I believe that it is an opportunity for some, for some commercial development there, to bring tax revenue with, without many other issues, so, but if we want to continue the discussion and look at some other opportunities, I would be willing to do that, so I will probably support the motion, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you, motion on the floor is to continue this to the, what we say, the May twenty-first Legal and Finance Meeting, any further discussion on that motion, further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, motion passes, we're on to item number sixty-eight please.
Sixty-eight is to request staff to prepare an annexation study of the North Valley Drive Annexation Area, a notice of hearing, and a resolution of intent to annex, recommendation from the Legal and Finance is to direct staff to prepare study, and then advertise for hearing on notice of intent to annex, that'd be my motion.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to prepare the study, and to advertise for the public hearing, and notify, was it the property owners, a notification, okay, very good, discussion on that motion, any discussion, we did have a second, correct, Jackie, okay, very good, seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, motion passes, item number sixty-nine please.
Sixty-nine is a resolution directing that city staff convert the city ten-hour parking meters at Appalota, Appolda Street to two-hour meters, and I move to have Jason Green Doc, please.
Not sure, I think we went for rule, that went out of order, but Jason, what is your recommendation, please?
Thank you Mr. Mayor, in conversations with Chief Allender, his staff is still breaking down some of these numbers, so I recommend you refer this back to the Legal and Finance Committee, so we can give you a hard copy before we ask you to make a decision on this.
That'd be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer this back to Legal and Finance, in two weeks, is that correct, date specific? Next Legal and Finance Committee meeting, very good, discussion on that motion, the motion is to send back to Legal and Finance, discussion on the motion, Alderman Karen Olson.
I, I'll just be in support of the motion.
Very good, motion on the floor is send it back to Legal and Finance, any further discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, motion passes, we're on to the Public Works Committee items, item number seven, and Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Item number seventy is concrete pavement benefits and life cycle cost presentation by the American Concrete Pavement Association, motion be to table this item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, there is no discussion on tabling motions, so we go directly to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, motion passes, thank you everyone, we are on to item number seventy-one.
Seventy-one is to designate the proposed new site located north of the Journey Museum as along the hillside for the Atta Pawal Gardens and Market Site, and authorize the applicant to proceed with eleven-six nineteen review application, motion be for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval to designate the proposed new site for the Atta Pawal Grounds at the parking lodges north of the Journey Museum, discussion on that motion, Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I just would point out to my colleagues on the Council, that chiefly, what this does is designate a site, so that Atta can go back and review the figures and the fiscal plan that they have for this particular site, and that really is tied to the exact location of this particular project, and as you know, more than three years has passed since they put together their numbers, and those numbers were based on another site, so all this really does is assure us that we will have a valid discussion coming forward about, with numbers that are accurate for you all to look at as we go forward with this project, or as we make our decision whether we're going to go forward with this project.
Thank you, we also have a light on from Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, thank you Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment to the people that spoke earlier on this item, and say that it is a great opportunity for the youth of our city to learn more of their culture and the cultures of the others, and that goes all the way around, not only for the Native Americans in our, our community, but also, as she stated, you know, the Germans, the Irish, I think we all need to learn the different cultures and the importance it is to us all, and with that, I'm in support of the motion, and welcome them the best, and look forward to working with you guys, thank you, Daphne.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson, please.
Thank you Mayor, I'm gonna support the site selection, I think it's important, at least, to move the project forward, I do think there's other work out there regarding financial analysis and things, but I really think this gives us an opportunity to get our, our hands around this project, so I think it's important to do that, and secondly, I would request that the Atta folks attend the annual twenty-twelve hearing, and that we can actually start some of the process and getting that to happen, so we make sure that we have, as we go through the whole thing, that we have the information that the Council's gonna need as we move forward, and appreciate your hard work on that, thank you.
Thank you, Tom Johnson, that's very good comments, let's see, any further discussion, any further discussion, motion on the floor is for approval of the designation of the proposed new site, which is north of Journey Museum, seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, motion passes, thank you everyone, on to item number seventy-two, please.
Seventy-two is the requirements for the use of the Greenway pedestrian bike path funds, and this I refer to Jerry Cole.
I'm sorry, what?
I refer this to Jerry Cole.
We turn to Jerry Cole.
Okay, very good, I couldn't hear you, weren't speaking, you might have just heard.
I refer it to Jerry Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to give a brief report, if I may. About five months ago, we started out on this project, and we wanted to, first of all, create a vision and goals of what we wanted, we solicited key public input, and benefits of what we're going to do, final projects, cost estimates, and then next steps. Vision and goals, we wanted to learn more about and create a system of interconnected pathways throughout Rapid City, and when we started with our comments period, we found out that the community wants trails all over the community, and we've got, we, as you know in your books, that you were given, the comments were completely around the city for new trails, some of the key time periods that we had, starting back in September, is when we opened a public comment, we held two public sessions for comments, and we held, email was sent to us, as well as letters were sent to us. Benefits, and I won't dwell on this too much, but as everybody knows, pathways in our community are beneficial in terms of health, recreation, environment, and also economic benefits. Get down to the nitty-gritty here, when we went to look at the comments and look at what people wanted, we had some criteria that we had to look at, the Federal Transportation Administration gave us some guidelines, the project must be located in Rapid City, it must be tied to existing Greenway and bike pedestrian path, and it must involve expansion of the existing bike and pedestrian path, and it must not involve condemnation. The Parks and Recreation also put in their guidelines for the use of this fund, and the guidelines that we use for all of our capital improvement projects are, does it improve or fix safety issues that are out there, is it part of an unfinished project, and is it part of an existing master plan, and what project will create the most use in a new biking and walking trips? Other guidelines that we looked at came from the community, these guidelines are, will a project make an impact in terms of use, visibility and economically on the city Rapid? Will a project leverage other resources, are there other monies out there that we can utilize to develop a bigger and a better project than just the one point seven million dollars from the Highway Transportation Fund, and will it improve connections to other bike and pedestrian areas of the city, and will it raise public awareness of walking and biking in our community? Well, we went through more than fifty comments that had come in, and in a list of priority, we developed a matrix, you have those in your books, with all the criteria, and we rated each project against that criteria, some of the projects fell out early because they either weren't in the city limits, or they weren't tied to the Greenway Bike Way Path, but the number one project came out as the Founder's Park upgrades and trail expansion, connection to the bike path along Steel Street to the School of Mines was second, extension of the bike path to Rapid Valley along the Greenway or the Rails to Trail project east of, going east out of Rapid, out of Campbell Street, and the extension of the bike path from the Fish Hatchery west to the Cliffside Park, which is our furthest west-side park in the city. Founder's Park project would include upgrades, expanding the existing parking area, which right in here, would be expanded, restrooms that we've been looking at for several years, as long as possibly a bridge over a creek, pedestrian bridge over the creek, a trail connection that would come along here, and a trail connection that would go on the west side of Executive Golf Course up north to Anamosa, a little better photograph here. This is part of the M-Hill Master Plan that was designed last year, as you can see, that bottom trail was designed in, there is not money to build that yet. The trail along the Golf Course, Executive Golf Course would come up here, the, this area right here, where West Philadelphia used to be, the developer is putting in a trail, right here to here, this trail would be connected, there's a trailhead that is being put in right down there by the Founder's Park LLC, they are going to connect to the trail at the base of M-Hill, the idea would be either to run the trail up through here, which is city and state land, and then up to Anamosa across here. Most of that area would be off-road, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be on the road, it wouldn't be a sidewalk. Some of the photographs, as you can see, here's the west side of the Golf Course where the trail would run, the other trail would start here and go on the base of M-Hill, this is city property and state property that the trail could go through to hit West North Boulevard, and this is the sidewalk that goes up to Anamosa, right here, and would connect actually to Horseman School, so there are other monies that could be included in this project, Parks and Recreation has eighty thousand dollars, we could possibly get a grant from Safe Routes to School to help with that, but the initial estimates of that cost of those elements would be one thousand, one million five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that is just preliminary. The Steel Street Trail would come down along Steel Street with a crossing somewhere along here on Saint Joe, some of the photographs. And the estimated cost is around three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that, depending on how, what level of crossings that you would put in. The Rapid Valley could either be along the Greenway, or the Rails to Trails project And again, you have all these in your booklets that were given out, just some of the photographs, this photograph here is Saint Patrick Street Crossing at Star of the West, this is the levee that runs down the Greenway along that area, that's the bridge, if we were to decide trying to go under the bridge for a crossing at Saint Patrick Street, this is the Rails to Trail area east of Campbell Street down to Elkville Road, and the cost on that would be anywhere between eight hundred and one and a half million dollars, depending on whether you went Greenway, or whether you went Rails to Trail, Greenway land is a lot more if you're going to purchase the land to do that. Extension of the bike path to the Fish Hatchery, from Fish Hatchery to Cliffside Park, the Fish Hatchery is here, the bike path would run along here, and then under a bridge right here to Cliffside Park, again, there's private property in there that would have to be purchased, so it would depend on the cost of that private property of how, how much that would cost, easements or purchase of land, paving estimates are about- Easements or purchase of land, paving estimates are about $300,000. Underpass estimate about $300,000. That's my presentation.
Thank you. We do have a couple of lights on here. Let's go to, and the chair would look for motion. There's no motion on the floor. Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make some comments and then I'll have a motion as well. Jerry, thank you and your staff for vetting all these projects as they came in. I think it's important for the community to have played a part and still play a part in what we should use that money for. Question about the Founder's Park. I think you had eight criteria based on the greenway funds, what we could use them for, then the four criteria put forth by Parks and Rec. It seemed to me that the Founder's Park met a lot of those, the Founder's Park LLC met a lot of those criteria. I'm just wondering, there's $100,000 or $200,000 of 2012 money that's set aside for Founder's Park LLC. Could we use that money to be the match, the 18.5% match, and then have some of that work done on that trailhead to be what will eventually be Founder's Park? I noticed that in your report, you started off talking about John Brennan and the original layout of the city, so that was the Founder's Park LLC. After I hear an answer for that, I'll have a motion.
Jerry.
I will have to get back to you on that. My first impression would be to say no, because it's not related. The money for that is for the plaza area, for the original plaza in the park, which would not be related to a bicycle or pedestrian pathway or a trailhead type of use.
Okay.
Mr. Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
My motion would be to acknowledge the report and then send the report, or send this discussion to Legal and Finance for further discussion of those four recommendations.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Send this back to Legal and Finance, next Legal and Finance for recommendation, and then on back to the City Council. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll be in support of that motion. I would, just as a comment, say that the Parks and Rec and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has spent a lot of time looking at this project, and I thought the matrix they used, which they did share with you through the, this report that was made, shows you how completely they've looked at all of the criteria. And one of the important criteria in terms of the Park and Rec Advisory Board themselves were the, we're fixing safety issues along the bikeway. And so what you see emerging here is something that has given, been given a lot of very careful thought and definitely fits into the criteria of what the money can be appropriately used for, but it does some excellent things. One of the things I think you should note with the Founder's Park Trail as well as the Rapid Valley Trail, there is some economic impact that potentially lays with both of those projects. The Founder's Park project probably will expand the cities as a destination for bicyclers. As you know, the city is now annual, is now beginning an annual Fat Tire Festival, which they hold in May. The very first year, the number of applicants and the number of participants was very large. And so the potential to have Rapid City become a larger center for bicycling is something that will be, could be very significant for tourism. And in addition to that, the trail that is in Rapid Valley has the potential for also doing some connecting in terms of the airport, Cedar Pass, and the Black Hills, which also have a tremendous economic impact in terms of tourism. So my compliments to the committee which worked hard on this, and I think, I will be in support of the motion on the floor, because I do think this is a discussion which needs to move forward in a positive way, and you, that, we've been provided with a lot of meaningful information as we make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make the comment that the way this went about is, you having those public, two public hearings and gathering the information was very informative, not only to the people in the community, but for me that Jerry held. I got to learn a lot of the stuff, a lot of the interests of the people with Rapid Creek and the greenway along that. We had a lot of, there was a lot of great ideas. I think you had over 50 proposals for this funding, and one of them that did come forward in an extensive report was the Noah Drainage Report, our, Noah Drainage Report. And I'm going door-to-door with that now, so. But I do want to thank you for your work on this, Jerry, and those public hearings were great. I think some great ideas came out of them, and I'm glad you guys narrowed it down. Thanks, Jerry.
Very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to send this back to our next Legal and Finance Committee meeting. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none others in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 73, please.
It's an appeal of the denial of a request to allow a driveway approach which is not directly opposite and does not meet minimum spacing requirements on East-North Street. And my motion would be for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Robert Ellis, our Acting Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Your staff was asked at the Public Works Committee meeting to look into this, have our traffic, city traffic engineer evaluate feasibility of this access location. We did do that using a software that simulates turning movements of vehicles and looking at the proposed site design and the type of vehicle that will be doing delivery of auto parts there. It does appear that that is the best location for that driveway.
So your recommendation is for?
For approval of that driveway as located on the site plan.
Very good. Okay, further discussion, let's go to, let's see, so the motion, just for clarification, the motion on the floor is for approval. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hatcock.
Is that approval with the stip that we'll have a covenant on the property?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My recommendation would be to include that's the stipulation for a covenant that clearly spells out that the city will not be liable for damages if we have to close that in the future, because you are creating a non-conforming situation. And I think for purposes of tonight's action that your stipulation could simply be that they sign a covenant that's acceptable to the city attorney. And I understand where you're at and what you.
Okay. Is that all right with the motion maker?
Yes.
And the seconder? No, then I need another second, please. Okay, very good. Now we're still in order. Okay, discussion on that, let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only clarification I'm needing on this particular item is to understand, it said, that the motion says does not meet the minimum spacing requirements, and my understanding was with this change, they are meeting the minimum spacing requirements. Am I incorrect in that assumption?
Let's go to Robert Ellis or Marcia Elkins, whoever wants to take a shot at that. Marcia?
The spacing requirement that they're not in compliance with is the offset between different driveways. They either need to be lined up or offset 75 feet, so they're not meeting that. The other issue, which is the offset from the corner, they are, I believe, two feet short of that, and staff had previously approved that exception. So that's been addressed previously.
Alderman Olson, you still have the floor? Very good. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Can I have, could we have a picture of that for everybody to see? Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And while she's setting that up, I have a question for the applicant. Is this going to, is this covenant going to be a problem for you?
Janelle, could you please identify yourself for the record, please?
Janelle Fink with Fisk Land Surveying, agent for AutoZone. And one of the things that I might like to clarify is that also in my discussion with Robert Ellis, he indicated that the Checker Auto, which is directly.
Janelle, just so you know, there was a specific question. I need you to address that question. Bill, could you repeat the question again, please?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, are you, is, do you have any problems or issues with this covenant that we're suggesting?
My comment does relate.
Yes, you can only.
To the covenant.
Yes, please.
Okay. In my discussion with Mr. Ellis, he indicated that the approach that is located on the Checker Store, which is directly to the south, could be shifted to the east to align with our approach at such time as they do the East-North Street reconstruction, and it would not compromise the Checker Site. So I believe that we would be in compliance at that time. In regard to them signing a covenant that says that they either agree to not pursue any harm, it makes it a little difficult for me to recommend that to this client because of the fact that this specific location is really the only thing that works for this particular site. So if at some point in time in the future you were to close this, they would not have truck delivery available to them. But I do believe that in the future, based on what Mr. Ellis indicated, that we probably would be in compliance with this ordinance.
Alderman O'Krepeke, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So in short, yes or no answer, are you okay, you're not okay with this?
Not okay.
Okay. You know, I certainly appreciate some of the thoughts that the, that some of my colleagues are having. My concern is here, and the only reason why I did not, I pulled my second from the, from the additional motion, is because if, in order for, if you look at the, if you look at the picture there, you'll see where, can you point to where the? Okay.
What?
Yeah, where they, where you, where they would have to put the, the access in order to be in compliance. Here's, here's the problem here. It moves to, to the, to the left from the way I'm looking at it. Yeah, that's where they need to go, right? So if for some reason or another, at some point in time, and we say, now you have to move that, where they have their entrance now, to that location, the problem is, is that they'll be able to drive the truck in there, but they're going to have to back out onto North Street, because that's the only way they're going to be able to get it now. They won't be able to turn that truck around. And so my concern is, is that if we say, you can have this access now, but three years from now when we do the road, or whatever the case may be, you are now going to have to move your access to the circled area. That's going to make it very, very difficult for them to get their trucks in and out of. And that's my only concern. You know, I don't know how to get around that, but to me, it's asking these people here that, yeah, you can have your access so that it's convenient and your trucks can work, but in the next couple, three, four, five years, we're going to stop that and you're going to have to move it over, and, and now the delivery is going to be difficult. I don't think it's fair to the applicant. I don't think that's in the best interest of what we want to have in our city. So I'm, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure where the vote's going to go or how everybody's going to think about it, but to put a, put a stipulation that they may have to move that access to the circled area, which would in fact, which would in essence stop their ability to take, to receive goods, could be a real handicap for the AutoZone company. So, you know, I'd like, you know, I'd like to make a, well, we'll see where the motion goes. I, I am not going to support the motion on the floor, because I don't want to handicap AutoZone at this point, and I would, and I'd like the original one where you have it without any stipulations. That's my comments. Thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval of stipulations. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I respect what Alderman O'Krepeke had to say, because I, I too was on that same page until Robert had came back with the report and did the study that's saying, you know, and, and Growth Management had made the comment that actually checkers need to, needs to change, because I've been in and out of checkers, and that's more dangerous than, than what they're proposing. And I think it'd be safe for them to line and maybe have a bigger, a wider driveway in. So I don't have the problem with the motion, the original motion on the floor. I think it's a safeguard that makes the city attorney feel good and, and protects us a little bit. But, you know, that's enlightened what, some other things that have come up. And Janine, I, personally, I don't think you're going to have a problem with it if, with that stipulation, but as Bill O'Krepeke says, you never know. But I'll, I'll go either way on this. Thank you.
Marcia, you have anything you need to add? If not, I'm going to go to the council. It's okay. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with Alderman O'Krepeke. My question is here on the agenda, I don't see any stipulations at all. What, what other stipulations is there to this?
Mr. Kroger, the stipulations were added, and those were the recommendations of the...
That's just the covenant, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, like I said, I agree with Alderman O'Krepeke. You know, we have these kind of curb cuts and this type of stuff all over this town on every street, and it's not that we do these all the time and give exceptions, but we have in the past, and I've never heard of a covenant being put on one of those properties. So Mayor, if someone would, please fill me in why we're doing it to this property.
Is that a question to a specific person, Alderman?
Anybody that's willing to answer it, Mayor.
Let's go to Jason Green, says his recommendation. Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the council just required a covenant, as I've described, for the property that's located at the intersection of Haynes Avenue and Catherine Drive. It's going to take access onto Haynes Avenue. Again, that was a non-conforming situation as this is, and it was my recommendation that the council require this covenant so that the council doesn't have to pay for closing that access in the future. I'd remind the committee that we're currently set in a civil trial on Monday on a curb cut that was closed on a secondary access. This is a primary access here. The plaintiffs in that case are claiming that that secondary access cost them upwards of a quarter million dollars. That site is not a retail site as this would be, so if it's necessary to close this curb cut because of the non-conformity, my suggestion is that it's going to cost the council a lot of money, and that ultimately is borne by the city's taxpayers. That's the reason that I've recommended that you require this, the applicant to sign the covenant, to ensure that we don't have to pay to correct a non-conforming situation.
Mr. Kroger, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate your explanation. And I guess my only, I'll, I'll go back to, we've never ever had a covenant on anything that we've done like this in the past, and to put Catherine Street in that, what we did there, and this one in the same light, I don't think is, is correct. And I guess my biggest concern is what we have on that piece of property today is probably more of a risk to the city than us doing this curb cut. So I would urge this council to approve it without the covenant. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I can support the motion on the floor, because I do understand Jason's, our city attorney's concern about the legal possibilities that might. My question would be, what would trigger the, acting upon the covenant agreement?
Well, just off the top of my head, a couple of things come to mind. Need to reconstruct East-North Street. Litigation that the city may face as a result of an accident from a, a non-conforming curb cut. There, there are a number of things that could trigger that. I don't know of any plans at this point in time that the council has that would necessitate it, but again, you can't predict the future with clarity, so it's important that at the time these situations are created, we provide as much protection as possible for the taxpayers.
Alderman Olson, you still have the floor?
So then I follow with that, Jason, or whoever can answer this question would be, we are talking about reconstructing East-North Street. I mean, that is, we've been approving, in fact, I think tonight we approved design plans for East-North Street. And is the assumption that when that happens, there'd be a change to this curb cut?
Let's go back to Jason Green.
I guess what I'm asking, is this an imminent concern?
Jason Green, city attorney.
I'm not aware that it's an imminent concern. You may ask Mr. Ellis, he's probably more familiar with that than I am.
Karen, would you like to ask that question of Mr. Ellis? Mr. Ellis?
We do have plans to reconstruct East-North Street, and Janelle had pointed out the fact that we would like to visit with Checker Auto Parts to realign their driveway to match this driveway if this is approved. They're under no obligation to do that, but we'd like to have that conversation with them, because we feel it would work better in this situation. So that is something we would pursue if this does get approved. I would like to follow up on one other comment in the future, when would we ever act on this covenant? What I would see is if this use did change, and you no longer had these large semis delivering parts to this auto store, it would be an opportune time to go in during the building permit or the rezoning and ask, do you really need to have that driveway there? Do you have smaller vehicles now? And that'd be a good opportunity to relook that situation. So I don't know that it would change with this exact use, but to have that opportunity or that possibility in the future to reexamine the issue would be beneficial.
Alderman Olson, you still have the floor, ma'am?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Bob Pearl. Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Bob Herobud.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Olson, I think, is getting at, and Mr. Ellis as well, getting at what I was gonna suggest is a compromise here, that I think would work for everybody. And that'd be that the covenant be effective only if the business use of the premises changes, just like the scenario Mr. Ellis mentioned, where there's no longer a need for semi-truck delivery. That's what activates the city's, the covenant. And short of that, that curb cut remains there as long as that use remains there. So I think we've covered both bases there. And frankly, I wanna make sure this project gets approved in a viable fashion. I could go either way on the covenant, but I think I'm gonna offer that as a substitute motion, that the covenant be only triggered by a change of the business use of the premises. I don't know if I have the right language there, but I think it's clear what I'm, what I'm saying.
Okay, we have a substitute motion, a second, to approve with stipulations, and the stipulations changing as far as the requirement of the covenant. So I'm gonna go to Jason Green, our City Attorney, just for clarification, make sure that is workable.
Thank you, Mayor. It's certainly better than nothing, but it leaves the city very open for other eventualities that may, may come up and require the closure of that curb cut. So I don't think it is, provides sufficient protection. It's better than nothing, though.
Okay. Let's go back to Alderman Herobud. You still have the floor, sir?
Thank you. And I, I guess, I think there are times, like, for example, if we reconstruct East North Street, that's our project, not theirs. And I think we should be responsible for that. And, and this compromise would, would leave us responsible for that. But if the business use changed, we'd still have that option. I would like to ask just if the applicant could indicate whether they're acceptable with, with this version of the covenant.
And at that point, what I'll do is I'll ask you for a simple yes or no, if you understand the question, sir.
Yes, I do, and that would be acceptable.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Herobud, you still have the floor, sir. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Within the last couple of months, there was a very similar request and discussion on St. Patrick's Street involving Calvary Chapel. And my recollection of that particular application is, is that the council asked for something very similar, and the applicant reluctantly agreed to it, but did agree to it. And then, and so I, I don't think that we're necessarily plowing new ground by asking for a covenant. And I think in the interest of protecting the taxpayers, in case there's a, when we hope that the rebuild is eventually gonna happen on East North Street, I've been waiting for it for a long time. But when it does happen, we wanna make sure that the taxpayers are protected. And having the covenant on there certainly doesn't prohibit the applicant from coming forward and presenting new facts or new information. So this is not a waiver of right to protest. This is merely a, something to protect the, the city from ending up in another lawsuit like what we're in in the, in the different areas. So I would, I ask that we strongly consider approving the initial covenant. And I think it's a reasonable solution, and it's something that we've done before. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the attempt to compromise, but I, I will not be in support of this current motion that limits what the stipulation of the covenant could be, simply because our city attorney has said that potentially, if there was a lawsuit there, or if there was an accident there, then we couldn't invoke that, that, because we can only invoke it based on this stipulation, if there were a change of use in the property. I see a number of other reasons why we might wanna do that somewhere down the line. I, I guess I have a question about the Checker's property. If, if, I, I don't know if we've talked, if someone's had conversation with them, but if they move their curb cut, would that somehow negatively impact their business? Or have we had that discussion with them? Are we intending to have that discussion with them? And then who would pay for that?
We'll try and keep this fairly close, but Mr. Ellis, if you could answer that, we'll, we'll, we will allow it as germane to the question, but issue. But, Mr. Ellis.
We have not had that conversation with Checker. We would, probably within the next year, the cost of that would be incurred with the project. We would be rebuilding their driveway anyway, just relocating it to a new location, so there would be no additional cost.
Alderman Chapman, you still have the floor, sir? Very good. Thank you. Let's go to, let's see, Alderman Kroger has spoken. So let's go to Alderman Hatcock, who is...
Not spoken.
Oh, that is, that is correct. We're gonna go to Alderman Ron Kroger. We do have a new motion on the floor, which was a substitute motion.
Would you clarify the motions on the floor, Mayor?
Motion on the floor for, is for approval with stipulations, and the stipulation is a covenant. And what would actually trigger that covenant, it would be a change in use of the property, if I'm not mistaken. Jason, did I get that one close enough?
I think so. Let me try just a little bit of language, so everyone's clear. Change in more than two digits in the standard industrial classification code. That's similar to the language that we have in the ordinance.
Very good. Alderman Kroger, you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I again would urge that we, we not put the stipulation on there. I understand the lawsuit. And actually, the circumstances involved with that lawsuit are a lot different than what we're looking at doing today. But if you drive down East North Street, East North Street's not the only one, but if you drive down East North Street and look at the curb cuts that are there, how far they are spaced from corners and that type of stuff, it's incredible. They're all over the place. And, you know, we've had a lot of new businesses go up, thankfully, up on East North Street. And like one that I'm thinking about is Papa Murphy's on the corner of, uh, uh, East North Street and La Crosse. I mean, that building is not that old, and that's got some incredible access to it. I mean, number one, you're going on La Crosse Street, and probably 20 feet from the corner, you can exit, or you can pull out of Papa Murphy's and pull onto La Crosse Street. That's an issue to me, but we allowed that to happen. And, you know, reconstruction or not, what's gonna happen to, when East North Street is reconstructed? Are we gonna, are we gonna close a bunch of curb cuts that are existing there today? I guess that'd be for this...
Robert Ellis. We're not gonna require closure of any access. We're gonna sit down with those landowners and try to consolidate as many as possible, but they will be voluntary. So, no requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I, I guess I'll conclude with, like I said, what we have there today, sitting on that piece of property that we haven't been able to get rid of for years, is a far greater hazard and liability to this city than what's going in there. And if these people are not willing to accept that covenant and move on to another property, we, we, this city is really lost. So I would ask this council not to take that covenant off, because we, we have approved these time and time again, and we've never put a covenant on. And I'd ask that we not put it on this piece of property. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We also have a speaker, or we have a light on from Alderman Deb Hatcock.
I respect what Mr. Kroger has said, but you said one thing, willing, willing allowed, or willingly let that happen. Now we're willing, willingly going to let it happen again on a nonconforming curb cut, with a change of use is where we're gonna switch it. And that's when the covenant will kick in. Wow. Now we're just allowing it to happen with rules, whatever we make up, so it can happen. I don't agree with that. I think, again, protection to the taxpayers, we already proven it before. We had two curb cuts over on the church area. We put a covenant on that one. That had two curb cuts with an area that isn't even half the traffic as what this has. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out the difference. We've done it before. I agree with the city attorney, the liability is the issue here. Taxpayers' expense is what can happen here. Even if we allowed it to happen, that's why we're listening to the attorney and doing something different. Again, I respect what you're saying, Mr. Kroger, but again, you shouldn't keep allowing it just because we did it before.
Thank you. We have a couple more lights. I'm gonna tell you, we've been going on this issue for going about 20, 25 minutes. And my suggestion is, if we can't wrap it up in the next five minutes, we need to continue this item. So with that, Alderman Bob Herobud.
Thank you, Mayor. The only comment I wanna make is that, as I stated before, I do wanna see this project proceed in a, in a viable fashion for the applicant. And, and my impression is that, that a covenant without my compromise suggestion would not be viable for the applicant. And so I hope that my colleagues will approve the compromise, 'cause otherwise I'm gonna have to vote against the covenant, and then we're in a mess, I guess. I don't know where the votes will come down, but that's just my, my urging to my colleagues. Thanks.
Okay. We also have a light on from Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to review that the applicant is okay with this. And, and sparked review is if it changes use, something changes in that place in 20, 30 years, we might need to change something. So I think it's okay. But like, I'll just review, the applicant's okay with it. And I, I, and I'm okay with it now, so. Thanks.
Marcia, do you have anything very quickly to add to this?
Just wanted to know if you were done with the picture. Bring the lights up.
Okay, very good. Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulation, and just a clarification, because the original motion also had a stipulation. The motion on the floor is for approval with stipulation. The stipulation basically states that the covenant can only be triggered by a two-digit change within the code. Is that correct, Jason? Okay, everyone clear on that motion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hatcock? Herobud?
Aye.
O'Krepke?
Aye.
Chapman?
No.
Eiffenbahn? Olson. Kroger? Quaker?
No.
Mayor, you have a tie.
We have a tie. Chair is gonna vote no. We're back to the original motion. Okay. The original motion is for approval with stipulation. The stipulation is that the applicant enter into a covenants with the city. That is agreeable to the city attorney. I think it was the language we're looking at. Correct? Very good. Everyone clear on that motion? Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tom Johnson.
First time to speak, Mayor. I wanted some stipulation. I would just request that the council pass this with this stip. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hatcock?
Aye.
Herobud?
No.
O'Krepke?
No.
Chapman?
Aye.
Eiffenbahn?
Aye.
Olson? Kroger? Quaker?
Aye.
LaCroy?
No.
Motion passes six to four. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number 74.
Request, request the development of the DARB board to hear the request of Merlin Stoner to consider an exception to allow access to a higher-order street. And it's Lot B of BRS subdivision. And at the applicant's request, would like to continue this to the March 17th meeting.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
Continue, continue this to the March 17th meeting at the applicant's request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the March 17th meeting. And discussion on that motion. And discussion. Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by... I'm sorry. Tom, I apologize. I thought your light was on from last time. Alderman Tom Johnson.
Just a question regarding the motion. Would this also send it back and ask the DARB to hear it? How, how does this motion actually go in? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item would go to the DARB. They would hear it, make a recommendation back to the council, and the council would act on that recommendation. So ultimately, the council will make the decision under this action. You'll just have the input of the DARB board.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would actually prefer this to go to the DARB board and back to Public Works, if anything.
Jason?
If, if the continuation motion is approved, it would go to the Public Works Committee, and it would have to come back to the council again before it goes to the DARB board.
Okay. Let's go to, let's see, Marcia Elkins.
Thank you. The applicant sent an email late this afternoon, about 5:30, asking this item just to be continued to your next council meeting. And I believe that was the motion that was made by, by the chair of the Public Works Committee. And that would not send it back to committee at this point in time.
Okay. Jackie, is that correct? Motion on the floor, the original motion was to continue this item to March 17th. Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the council's normal practice, the item would make a stop at committee. If the council would like to skip that, you certainly could direct that.
Jackie, read back the original motion, would you please? Was it to actually continue for two weeks, which would bring it back to the city council meeting, or was it actually a motion? Okay. Which is a city council meeting, correct? So, just for clarification, the motion on the floor would continue this item for two weeks. It would come directly back to the city council meeting, no stops. Everyone clear on that? Okay. With that, discussion on that motion. Let's see, Alderman Johnson, I'm gonna come back to you. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson, who has not spoke yet.
Thank you. I think it'd be very helpful for it to go back through the normal process, which would take it to, I'm not sure whether it was Public Works or Legal and Finance. I'd ask, but it just seems to me some more discussion. It'd be an important part of what goes forward in regard to this. There's some important issues of safety and adjacency to the airport, and I would like it to go through the normal committee process. So I don't know.
You'd have to make a substitute motion.
I would make a substitute motion, that this be, that it come to the city council, but first go back to a committee.
Okay. We have a substitute motion and a second. The substitute motion is to actually send this to committee. Okay? Is that clear? Everyone clear on that? Okay. Very good. Let's go on. Let's, further discussion on that motion. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that the applicant was the one that had requested the, this actually be continued, but I also remember them saying, at Public Works, they wanted action on this as quickly as possible. And we, we have Development Appeals Review Board that the council set up several years ago for this very type of situation. Perhaps we even should have used them the previous item, but that's neither here nor there at this, this point. But I, I don't see any harm in calling the Development and Appeal Review Board and, and having them hear this request and review it. And it seems like we're, we're simply playing round, round robin with this thing by sending it back to, back, back to committee, and then it's gonna come back to council, and then we could send it back to DARB. I, I say we send it to the Development Appeal Review Board now. And, and they're a board that we can, that we can convene at any time. And then if the applicant truly doesn't want the Development Appeal Review Board to hear the appeal, then, then that is their call. So I'm going to offer a second substitute motion to ask that the Development and Appeal Review Board be convened to hear the request.
Okay, we have a second substitute motion and a second. And that motion is to send this item to the DARB board, and I imagine the progression would be the DARB board, Public Works, back to the city council.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay, very good. Is everyone clear on that motion? Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to the bids. Item number 75, Mr. Jim Preston, City Finance Officer.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have two bid items on the agenda tonight. The first one is the 2008 street painting projects. We received three bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Traffic Services Company in an amount of $60,642.90.
We have a motion and a second for approval. And discussion on that motion. And a discussion. Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The second item is for 2008 police vehicle contract for six Ford Crown Victoria patrol cars. Received the one bid from the key Ford. Staff is recommending accepting that bid in the amount of $148,104.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none. All is in favor, signify... Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the Vision 2012 update. And RJ, assume we're gonna do the same thing. Any changes in the program you're going to identify?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Rod Johnson with Public Works Department. Updates, as of March first, we've only got a couple of projects that do show updates. If you go to page four, or the second to the last page. The Doll Arts Center, a change order was approved, which is February eighteenth board meeting. And with the Civic Center, a change order was also approved. This was at your February fourth meeting, along with a contract amendment for reimbursable costs to forefront. The other thing that I did with this report, if you look under both of those, I know that council's been interested in, in available contingencies for those projects. The last line in those projects show what those contingencies are. You see with the Doll, the, the total contingency for the project cost is just over eighty thousand. And of course, I think you've been reminded, we do have a cap on that project of twenty-twelve dollars, of the three and a quarter million dollars. Any additional costs are bore by the Arts Council. On the Civic Center, unfortunately, that last line ended up on the top of the fifth page. It's how, it how it split it for me. So, and you can see we've got about a ninety thousand dollar contingency there. I will tell you that, that, you know, there are some, some pending change orders that are coming up on both of those projects. But we're cautiously optimistic that those projects are within budget and, and on time. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. One is, it'd be nice to have this linked to the agenda under the 2012 report, so that we can look at it in advance, if there are some changes. And then the second one is just a reminder to the council that we have our annual 2012 meeting scheduled for the thirty-first of this month. And if you have some ideas about some items that you'd like to have discussed at that meeting, please get them to Kate.
Very good, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Just a question regarding some additional change orders that are coming forward. Are these something that you see far enough in advance that the council can actually talk about these change orders before the staff independently making the decisions?
RJ?
Some of the things, for example, the, for example, the club expansion, club space expansion. We, you know, we have, we have talked about that. And, you know, it's, at this point, it's just a matter of putting together the paperwork. The, the club, or the, the hockey organization has agreed to, to the, the added costs for that area. Some of the other ones, I guess I, I wouldn't necessarily be prepared to, you know, to talk about them at this meeting, but, but we certainly could.
I know there, there are a number of change orders that happen because you open up soil and you need to do some additional work. And there are some change orders that actually come along that change your structure itself and have enough time that the council can actually talk about those. Now, I understand the things, decisions that need to be made in the field. I don't have a problem with the, with the staff making that. If we're doing some changes that we would kinda like to add to as the project goes, and the council can be apprised, I think you ought to apprise the council prior to that. Because a change order isn't a slush fund. It's, it simply allows the project to get done and hopefully get done in a quality manner. Those are, that's one comment I have. My second comment is that I've made a request before, and when we're done acknowledging this, I'm gonna offer a motion. But I would like to see the Civic Center come and give us an update as to how they're doing on renting that facility. And I've asked for that a couple of times, and haven't seen that yet. So I'm gonna make a motion when we're done with this, just to make certain that we do actually get that at a council meeting. I, I think that's important. But I appreciate the update. It's, it looks like things are moving along fairly well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Johnson, if you want, I'll just, I'll make that happen. We'll, we'll have the Civic Center at our next council meeting, they'll give us an update.
If we would, please.
Very good, thank you. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reiterate a request that I had made previously or mentioned at one of the previous 2012 updates. And that is, is that we, that we add a column, if possible, relating to the O and M costs and the, the budget source for ongoing operation and, and maintenance. It's only reasonable that we do so, considering the fact that when we did this last round of 2012, in most cases, the council was presented with O and M costs at the time of the project approval. So I think that whenever possible, we should have an update. And I realize that some of this stuff is hard to put together, but if we can do what we can to try to keep that updated, so we can have an idea of what the 2012 program is costing in, in terms of O and M costs. So, I don't know if a motion is necessary for that, but I'd simply like to formalize what the council had committed to in the very beginning with this round of 2012. And that was to identify the O and M costs upfront. And I would like to keep that, you know, front and center. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's probably good discussion for your upcoming annual 2012 meeting. Let's go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question on, update on the soccer complex. I noticed we skipped over that. Do we have anything happening on it, or is that? I see it says site evaluation or something.
Yeah, to, I guess, to my knowledge, and I could maybe refer this to the council liaison, but at this point, the cited identification, a cited identification has been made with, with property owned in the northwest part of, part of, part of town. Some Doyle Estes, I'm sorry, northeast Doyle Estes property. Beyond that, as far as I know, the, the ball is in their court, so to speak, in terms of some of their overall development needs. And I guess if there's any further update, maybe I could refer that to Councilman Chapman. I don't know if you have any more information than that.
Ron, I guess I'd just like to request some sort of an update. They've, we've allocated three point eight million dollars for it. I'd just like to see where it stands.
There again, I think, good discussion at your upcoming 2012 meeting. Let's go to Alderman Bill Ocrebkey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Going back to what Alderman Quaker was saying, he's asked for this several times. And, and I'd just like to get a feel from, for the rest of my colleagues on how important that is to him. So I'm gonna offer a motion that we do put that, make that a requirement as a, as a line item in this 2012 project.
Okay, help me out with what your motion was, Alderman Ocrebkey.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Quaker's been asking for an O and M funding. What's it, what's the ongoing cost of these kind of projects going to be? And he's asked for it several times, and evidently, it's never, we never could get it on there. So, my question was, for the rest of my colleagues, is how important is that for them to see that? And I made a motion to say, made a motion to put the O and M costs on the 2012 paperwork that we have.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. And my understanding is to include the O and M, which is the annual maintenance and operation per each one of these, if they are completed. Okay? With that, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I surely don't have an issue with that, and I, I support that. That information did come forward at the time those applicants made application for the 2012 project, the last round. That O and M cost is listed in the book. It was given to us upfront. But I mean, I don't see any problem or issue whatsoever with it now including it on this spreadsheet, so that we can see it all in, in one form. I'm not sure if we'll have a 2012 update prior to our annual meeting, so I'll make sure that I put that on the agenda, as an agenda item for that meeting. It's only one other council meeting before we have that meeting. But I'll make sure if it's not addressed by the next council meeting here, if we have an update, that it'll be included with the, the information for the thirty-first.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is an important thing that we discuss, although each one of these projects initially did present information about their O and M costs. And they are, as Malcolm pointed out, listed in the, in the list of projects. I guess, this is probably dumbness on my part. I, I, it doesn't seem to me O and M is really relevant to a project that isn't completed as yet. And am I missing the point here? I mean, in other words, it should just stay the same until the project is completed, because it is whatever the project's estimated, is what those costs would be. I, I think Sam has an appropriate question, which would be that you look at those projects as they're completed and begin actually becoming operational. Am I missing the point here someplace?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, this, anything else, Alderman Olson, still on the floor?
No, I, I would just suggest that O and M becomes an important part of our annual meeting discussion as we move forward with what we're going to do with 2012 in the future. And I would certainly think it's a valid question to ask of, of projects that are completed. But for everything else, it's still an estimate. And we have those estimates as they exist in, you know, the current numbers for those projects.
Very good. Thank you. Just, just for clarification, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the motion maker, 'cause I, I think everyone up here is, I think we all know where we're headed, but the question is for clarification. Are we talking about O and M that is responsibility of the city? Or O and M that is responsibility of a private, like the Doll Fine Arts, where the O and M would be covered by that? Does anybody have an answer to that? I mean, I would assume that the concern is it's the O and M that would be the ongoing expense to the city, but I mean, I just want clarification. So let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker, who made the motion.
It would be the ongoing expense to the city.
For the city?
For the city.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification.
But it, but it would also probably be good to have a column that doesn't necessarily need to be on the spreadsheet, that has the overall estimated cost, because we've already seen some of our projects come forward and say, okay, our costs are going up by this much. And we know we'd originally talked about you taking on this much. Now we're asking you to take on this much more. So it might be good to, you know, be thinking about that. But the intent here is to understand what the responsibility is for the taxpayers.
Very good. I thought that's where we're headed, but thank you for, thank you for that clarification. With that, we will go to Jim Preston, our city finance officer.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess, maybe my question's been answered. As far as when you say updated, Mr. Ocrebkey, for example, like the Doll, I think they used a figure of seventy thousand dollars. You just want us to put that figure in a column on this spreadsheet? Is that what you're thinking? And I'm getting involved with it, because I assume that RJ will be coming to me on some of that.
We'll, we'll go to Alderman Ocrebkey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, these, these numbers are, we do have them, you're right. But they're not very handy to, to look at. And this is something that should be right in our face to look at. So, I mean, if the numbers are available, it shouldn't take too long to be able to put them on a column there. It shouldn't be, I mean, it should be pretty easy. And that's all I'm just saying, it's just making it easier for a policymaker, that if we can have all the information on one sheet, I mean, you're giving us this. What's to put another column, just to have, what, what are some of the funds that's gonna be ongoing for us? Just as a reminder, just as, as something that we can move forward with. That's where my intent was.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson. Okay, very good. Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor for the staff to start including the city's O and M on these projects every time we have a 2012 project update. Is everyone clear on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item seventy-seven A, and the Polar Plunge, and Alderman Deb Hatcock.
Yes, I'd just like to thank everybody that participated in the Polar Plunge. The Polar Plunge is an event that they held at Memorial Park. You had to jump in the lake this weekend. Mark Roffling, my husband Scott, and Mike Shad were the city slickers that jumped in together, which I appreciate very much that they helped me out. And we do have a couple weaklings, Mayor Hanks, Chief Alender, Malcolm Chapman, and Lloyd LaCroy. They would not join the team. Malcolm says he was judging, so he couldn't jump. But I have to give him a little crap, 'cause I shouldn't even say that word. Say it again. Anyway, I appreciate my team. Good job, Mayor. Put that down. But it was for the benefactor, was Special Olympics, which is totally awesome. They made great money. It was a hundred dollars a person. And I thank all the participants that did that, 'cause it was just a great event. It was fun to do. Malcolm said it was fun to judge. It was Malcolm's idea, and we probably would've had more people. But I kinda started that a little late, and I, I'm just teasing the mayor and Chief Alender and the rest of participants, because we kinda just called them on Friday and said, can you jump on Saturday? But again, I thank everybody. We did get a sweatshirt, which is totally cool, from that event. And again, it was awesome, and I thank everybody that participated in the city with this event. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
I just wanted to add, it was for South Dakota Special Olympics is what the fundraiser was for. And I believe, I heard a number being thrown around out there, fifteen thousand dollars being raised for South Dakota Special Olympics and then Rapid City area Special Olympics as well. So it's a great cause.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number seventy-eight, please. Yep. This would be, Deb, you wanna read that in?
Sorry, I was just thinking about the Polar Plunge. Are we on seventy-eight?
Seventy.
Okay. Seventy-eight is a notice of appeal for requirements of the Rapid City sign ordinance located at thirty-two thirty-one East Mall Drive. And it's continued till March seventeenth at the applicant's request.
We have a motion and a second to continue this item to the March seventeenth meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seventy-nine, please.
Seventy-nine is a notice of appeal for requirements of the Rapid City sign ordinance, chapter fifteen twenty-eight by Rapid Center, Rapid City, Pendleton County, South Dakota. Continued till March seventeenth, applicant's request.
We have a motion and a second to continue this item also to the March seventeenth city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to the public hearing items, items eighty through one eighteen. The chair would look for motion to open the public hearings for comments on items eighty through one eighteen. We have a motion and a second. Just for a reminder, I believe that we have disposed of items one oh six and one seventeen. So, with that, we are into the public comment period. We do have a speaker request form on item one eleven, from, it looks like Ashawn Warland. Ashawn still with us?
I think they, I think they stepped out, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We also have a speaker request form on item one eighteen from Steve Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Brennan. On this issue, if I'm not mistaken, this property is across West Boulevard from Central High School. I think that putting general commercial properties in such a close proximity to a school like this is a mistake. I think we're gonna be creating traffic hazards there, depending on what type of business would go in there. I think that this, this property is basically just right south of the underpass leading under West Boulevard and the entrance from the interstate. And I think that their state might be considering, I'm not sure, changing the ramp situation as we're coming in here, et cetera. And I, I just think as its relationship to the school, I think it would be creating extra traffic in this area that shouldn't be there. If the state does do something here with this interchange in the city by changing this designation to general commercial property, I believe we will end up paying a higher value for that if we do have to purchase this property for future use. I think that it's just poorly, it's just poor planning to, to allow this. I think it creates dangerous situations and possible extra expense for the city and the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. We have no further speaker request forms, so we will continue. He's not here. Okay, so we are on to the continued public hearing consent item, items. This is items eighty through one oh four. So this is to continue the public hearing consent items. Items eighty through one oh four. I will turn to Marcia to explain. I will turn to Marcia to expect any of those to be pulled. Very good. Chair would look for motion to approve the consent, continued public hearing consent calendar, items 80 through 104, please. We have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, and we'll, Sam will be right with you. Motion on the floor is for approval of the consent calendar. I'm gonna go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask that items 82 and 92 be removed for separate consideration.
Eighty-two and ninety-two, is that correct?
Yes.
Ninety-two. Eighty-two and ninety-two. Just for clarification, this is the continuation, okay, very good. Okay, let's go to Alderman Bob Herobod.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, Mr. Quaker, did I hear you say ninety or?
Ninety-two.
Eighty-two and ninety-two. Is that all right with the motion maker? Chair, you can ask a question. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Just a question procedurally. I mean, these items aren't gonna be discussed until March 17th, so are we now opening them up for discussion tonight? Is that the point, Sam, or?
Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
If the mayor will allow me, I can just ask my question now.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. There were four items relating to the Highway 16 Walmart site that were on tonight's agenda. There was eighty-two, ninety-two, 106, and 117. 106 and 117 were withdrawn, and what I'm wondering is how eighty-two and ninety-two fit into the process now that the other two have been withdrawn.
We'll take just a little bit of light or two, so we can get this all squared away. Marcia Elkins.
These items have been continued at Planning Commission. In fact, they appear on this Thursday's Planning Commission meeting, and the recommendation is that they be continued till March 27th. Without the rezoning that was on the schedule for tonight, the initial development plan, which is actually a fifth item that is appearing on the Planning Commission's agenda, would have to be revised, and potentially the plots would be revised as well. So at this point in time, I can't answer exactly how it will affect this. I believe the applicant is reviewing that, but we would anticipate this would be continued at Planning Commission's meeting to March 27th and probably would not appear on your agenda to the first meeting in April.
Just for clarification, the motion on the floor was to approve items 80 through 104. There again, Sam, do you still want these pulled? Okay, okay, very good. We're good to go. So we had a motion and a second to approve items 80 through 104, and that is on the continued public hearings consent items. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to the end of the consent public hearing consent items, and chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing. Very good. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on items 80 through 118. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to the consent public hearing, item 105. I don't know why we'd have one item on a consent. Let's just go to item 105.
105 is for alcohol license for Picasso Barn Pizzeria, and it says CUP in place, so that means move approval? Or does that mean what? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Marcia Elkins?
Yeah, Marcia, what's the recommendation on this? Is for approval, I assume?
There was a question this morning on whether or not the conditional use permit was in place, and yes, it is in place. I just wanted to confirm that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have dealt with item 106, so we are on to item 107, please.
This is a request by the City of Rapid City to amend for an amendment to adopt the comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from rural reserve to general commercial, locate north of Seeger Drive and west of Elkvale Road. Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's see, Mr. LaCroy, do you have comments on this?
Yes, Mayor. Items 107 through 110 was brought to my attention that it might be perceived I'd have a conflict of interest on this, so I'll be abstaining from items 107 through 110.
Very good. Well, reflect on the record. Further discussion? The motion is for approval. Alderman Karen Olson.
My question for Marcia would just be that if this is in sync with the future land use plan map.
Marcia.
This is the comprehensive plan amendment that's been discussed by the Future Land Use Committee. It was recommended for approval, as was it recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. If I might, Mr. Chair, this morning I was asked the question whether or not a plan development was in place. There is not a requirement for a plan development on this proposed change. That's because of the light industrial that exists in the area without a plan development.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Olson, you still have the floor, ma'am. Very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of all of us and perhaps the audience, if you could briefly explain what rural reserve zoning is.
Marcia Elkins.
Rural Reserve is not a zoning. It's a comprehensive plan designation that's identified on our comp plan, future land use plans, for areas where we do not currently have urban services in place. It's intended that the lots would be large lots, 40 acres or more. This particular area was identified as such originally because of floodplain issues in the area. There are flood maps that have currently been submitted to FEMA for review and approval. Based on that, the Future Land Use Committee and Planning Commission has recommended that these comp plan amendments move forward. The applicant will have to annex the property into the city limits, and at that time, zonings would be appropriate. Our conversations with the applicant is that those rezonings would not be put into place until such time as the FEMA maps are completed. So, the rural reserve is really intended for areas where urbanization is not possible until some other step is taken. In this case, it related to the FEMA maps that needed to be revised.
Alderman Quaker, still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Marcia, if the council chose to at later time, we could propose and request a plan development designation. It wouldn't have to be done now.
Marcia.
Certainly, the council could, before approving a rezoning of this property after annexation, request that the applicant do so in conjunction with a plan development designation.
Thank you.
Alderman Quaker, anything else? Very good. Thank you. Alderman Deb Hadcock.
My question would be, this is on North Elkvale Road. We are going to be doing East Mall Drive, and what we have out there now doesn't look good, I think. I mean, not everything out there, I should say it correctly. But my concern is that we have more development and more pole barn looking buildings instead of real brick mortar type buildings to make it look a lot better. And if you look where I-90 is from there, you can see all this development pretty easy from there. Would a PCD, if I could, Mayor, make a difference? Because what we're rezoning is a lot of property that's on North Elkvale, which is a major road, and by East Mall Drive.
Marcia.
If I might, on the map here, this is the location of East Mall Drive. We're about a half a mile north of there before we get to this node of commercial, general commercial that's been identified. There's a large area of light industrial that's been identified for the balance of this. And then the soccer fields that have been proposed and under discussion would be at the northern area of this, so it remains as rural reserve at this point in time. So there is about a half a mile spacing. Again, I'd just remind you that this is a comprehensive plan amendment. I believe the developer who has been working with the Future Land Use Committee would be agreeable to the plan development, particularly along the frontage of Elkvale Road for that portion as part of the conditions when he brings forward his rezoning. And just from the conversation today, I'll be glad to relate that to him, and I would anticipate he'd be agreeable to that for that frontage, approximately 500 feet back from Elkvale Road, if that was the desire of the council.
That would be my motion to add as a, I don't know if you stip it or if you just add that, to do a PCD on like 107, 108, 109, and 110.
Just, Marcia, I'm gonna go back to Marcia. I'm not sure if we can do that.
We can't amend the designation that's been identified as part of this planned, as part of the comprehensive plan amendment, which is before you at this point. It would take re-advertising of that. Your options would be to deny these without prejudice and ask us to bring them back with the plan development designation as part of the comp plan, or just to ask us to work with the developer to bring those forward. And I think we've had those discussions with him. I believe that he would be agreeable to them from our conversations.
Okay, so on these properties, we can put that as a stip, or how do we do it, Marcia, so it's followed through with?
Marcia.
I believe that when the rezoning comes forward after the annexation of it, that at that point in time, you would have control when council considers the actual rezoning of the property.
Thank you for that information, because I think if you look, there's Dias, there's East Mall Drive, there's North Elkvale, plus you're gonna put soccer fields. I think it would be time to start making that area step up just a little bit, just because of what's gonna be out there and what is out there now. So, thank you for that information, Marcia.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I just make it clear, the interest is in that front 500 feet or so off of Elkvale Road, not necessarily the entire property?
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with Alderman Lloyd LaCroy abstaining. Item 108, please.
108 is a request by the City of Rapid City to amend to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from rural reserve to light industrial. It's located north of Seeger Drive and west of Elkvale Road, and I'll yield to the floor for a motion.
This is 108. Okay, we have a substitute motion to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request. Everyone clear on that motion? That is a substitute motion. We did have a original motion and a second. This is the substitute motion and a second. To deny without prejudice at the applicant's request. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with Alderman Lloyd LaCroy abstaining. Item 109, please.
This is a request by the City of Rapid City for amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from public to light industrial. And this is located north of Seeger Drive and west of Elkvale Road, and I'll yield to the floor for a motion.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Okay, Marcia, you said that was on that first parcel. Can we do it on these other parcels, or can we ask the applicant? Okay.
Certainly, and I'll have that discussion with the applicant.
Thank you, Marcia.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with Alderman Lloyd LaCroy abstaining. Item 110, please.
This is a request by the City of Rapid City for their amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from rural reserve to light industrial, and this is located north of Seeger Drive and west of Elkvale Road, and I'll yield to the floor for a motion.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 111, please.
Item 111 is to approve the request of Sean Worland to consider an application for a fence height exception to allow a six-foot fence in the front yard setback. And this is located at 1001 Wombley Drive. My motion would be for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Whoops. We do have a light on from Alderman Karen Olson.
The only concern I had when I looked at this particular thing was, if this entire neighborhood decided to put six-foot fences around all of their yards, has any consideration been given to the impact that this would have on this neighborhood?
Who are you directing that to?
Maybe Marcia might have an answer to that. I'd actually even talk to-
Let's put her on the spot. Marcia, do you have an answer?
Again, the staff recommend denial of this, because we don't think it's appropriate to have six-foot fences in the front yard. I guess I would be concerned if you saw an extensive development that had six-foot chain link fences. I think it gives the appearance of an unfriendly neighborhood, particularly when they're in the front area adjacent to the street. In this case, it's a single lot, and the committee's recommended to you that it be approved.
Alderman Olson, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Well, as long as, I mean, no one is raising an issue, I'm not gonna raise an issue with this either. But I did have concerns about this, and I've actually put up chain link fence, and I do know, it wouldn't be that hard to lower this fence, actually. So my only question is just not, that is not the question, just the question, if the neighborhood would be faced with this in the future, does it have any long-term impact? And I just think we have to think about that. And I'll, I mean, I'll support this unless I hear some reason, because obviously, as I understand it, the association has approved this fence in place. So I guess I'll support this, but I do ask that question.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a reasonable request, and we should approve it. Sean asked everyone but the city, and everyone except the city did not have a problem with this, including his neighbors. So I think this is a very reasonable request, and I would ask that we approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Sean did have a speaker request, didn't he? I went down and talked to him. He didn't get a chance to eat before he come to the meeting, like we knew we needed to. But he had, if you have any questions here, he's here to ask. But the association did give him a letter of approval on this, and it is a chain link fence, and it's been up since 2005, so, you know, I'm aligned with the committees for recommend approval of this. Thank you.
So what did he have to eat, Lloyd? McDonald's, okay. Very good. Let's go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that the Public Works Committee has recommended approval. I'm sure it wasn't even two council meetings ago. We just beat a guy up for the same thing and told him to go remove his fence. Can someone explain to me why we're gonna allow this one?
Can you direct that to someone in specific, please?
I'm not gonna ask Marcia, because she recommended denial.
I can answer that. That was in my board, too.
Can I ask something like?
Can you direct?
Can I direct the question to Alderman LaCroy?
Sure. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a solid seater fence, and it was blocking the right-of-way vision, and so they, and the applicant, after months of going back and forth, they moved it back out of the right-of-way and the side triangles right now. So he's got it moved now, but it was because it was solid fence. This is a chain link.
Okay, let's go. Alderman Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Alderman LaCroy.
Okay, let's go to, see, Alderman, let's see, I guess both of you have spoken. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you look at the fourth of the pictures, you can see that this is a front yard fence, and the issue of side triangle doesn't exist, because this is a chain link fence, so you can see through it. So, safety isn't an issue in this particular.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Okay, a motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Wyffenbach. Were there any other no's? Okay. Very good. We're on to item 112, please.
authorize the mayor and finance officer to send a waiver to the right to process future assessment for the installation of curb gutter, water sewer, street light conduit, sidewalk along Spring Canyon Trails as it abuts Spring Canyon Road. This is located at the intersection of Clarkson Road and Spring Canyon Trail, and motion be for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Quaker, I do have your light on. Was that from last go-around? Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to 113.
It's a request by Rentner Associates for Joe and Steve Ben for variance to the subdivision regulations to weigh the requirements to install pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street light, conduit, water sewer along Spring Canyon Trail as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This is located at the intersection of Clarkson Road and Spring Canyon Trail Road, and a move for approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to item 114, please.
This is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Randy Long for the variance to subdivision regulations to weigh the requirements to install sidewalks and reduce the pavement and right-of-way width as per Chapter 16.16 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This is located adjacent to the north side of Mulligan Mile. Motion be to approve in part, deny in part- Motion be to approve in part, deny in part, and in accordance to the Planning Commission's recommendations.
We have a motion and a second to approve in part, deny in part, per the, let's see, in accordance with the Planning Commission's recommendations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. One fifteen, please.
This is a request by Renner and Associates for Joe and Steve Ben for vacation of right-of-way on a portion of Clarkson Road, right-of-way, and this is located at the intersection of Clarkson Road and Spring Canyon Trail. Motion be for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item one sixteen, please.
This is a request by Renner Associates for Joe and Steve Ben, Ben and vacation of right-of-way on portion of Spring Canyon Trail, right-of-way. This is located at the intersection of Clarkson Road and Spring Canyon Trail. Motion be for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, we've dealt with item one seventeen previously, so we're on to item one eighteen, please.
One eighteen is a second reading of ordinance number fifty-three twenty-eight and ordinance amending section seventeen oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code rezoning the within-described property as requested by Don Jarasek for rezoning from medium-density residential district to general commercial district located at four oh-nine West Boulevard, and I deny it. Oh, the motion.
Motion to deny.
I'm getting tired.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
I would be in support of the denial because I think this is a piece of property that is adjacent to land that the state has acquired at the corner of Philadelphia and, can't remember the cross street. And so I just think it's inappropriate to redistrict this, or to rezon this.
Okay, very good. Listen, we also have a light on from Alderman Bob Herobud.
Thank you, Mayor. Marcia, could you just give me a thumbnail of the request and reasons for denial?
This is a request that comes forward to you at the Silver Street Interchange. This is an area that the South Dakota Department of Transportation has been acquiring right-of-way in a protective fashion for the ultimate reconstruction of that interchange. That project was actually on the five-year plan in about nineteen ninety-one. However, it was removed to the long-range plan. In the last few years, DOT has been acquiring property. They've been negotiating with the applicant for this property. From a public policy standpoint, we felt it was inappropriate to rezon the property, and as a result, end up costing the taxpayers of the state of South Dakota more as a result of our rezoning action. I do need to make you aware of the fact that the comprehensive plan does show this as general commercial, but again, we felt the public policy issue was more important and again, making sure the taxpayers of the state of South Dakota are protected. So the recommendation comes forward to you from the Planning Commission for denial.
Alderman Herobud, you still have the floor, sir.
That's all I had.
Very good. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for denial. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to item number one nineteen in our bill list. Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. The bill listed, the council has totals five million five hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred eight dollars and seventy-six cents. There are no additions or corrections.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval for our total amount of, check me here, Mr. Preston, five million five hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred eight dollars and seventy-six cents.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's go to our city attorney. Do we expect an executive session?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. And I would request that the motion maker include as a part of the motion that the purpose is for those allowed by S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to go into executive session as permitted under S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Did we have a no? Okay, we are in executive session. Thank you, everyone. We have a, we have a motion and a second to come on to executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? We are out of executive session. Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I give the motion, I'm going to suggest that you hand the gavel to the council president for this motion.
Very good.
And I would ask the council to direct the city attorney to proceed in the Colonial Motel litigation in accordance with the discussion in executive session.
It's been moved and seconded to do what our city attorney, just the motion and second it for what his actions were. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I'll give the gavel back to the mayor.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.